I think we have to wait, we don't even have a quorum. I have to go out there and say something to someone.
Okay, he's just getting ready to turn the lights on.
Okay, good morning, or afternoon, and I apologize. It is 1:03 and we are beginning our briefing today. We have our quarterly reports that will be given by our advisory committees. We have four items under academic services and then we will move forward. But we will begin with our quarterly reports. And as you come up, I'm going to call the committee names. Please just say, announce your names. So we're going to start with the construction advisory committee. Pardon me?
Scott Rebeke.
No, for the, to give their quarterly reports.
We're still waiting.
You're still waiting for yours? Okay. CSI advisory committee, are they here?
She is.
If you would just say your name, please. Thank you.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and school board members. I'm Michelle Stork. The CSI advisory committee has met twice since our last report in October. In our meeting on November 8th, Mrs. Morgan shared a board update and the committee heard a presentation by Ms. Irma Miller, the Director of Strategic Communications. In her presentation, Ms. Miller shared an overview of the district's communication department, and the committee shared several concerns with her regarding district communications, including the following. Social media applications are blocked by the district, which makes it difficult to post real-time information. There is a fee for outside organizations to use Peachjar, which makes it difficult for nonprofit organizations to share information. And many school websites seem to be inconsistently updated and do not include an updated calendar. And school sites, the committee recommended, should be consistently updated, and the committee felt that with district direction, this should be a priority. The committee met again on January 8th, and Mrs. Morgan shared that the strategic plan introduced in 2017 is showing evidence and results from fiscal years 18 and 19 that the plan is working. One area of focus that Mrs. Morgan mentioned to the committee is pre-K due to children entering kindergarten without the necessary skills. Another area of focus is offering expanded programs for students entering the workforce after graduation. And the committee worked in groups to determine which of the Envision 2030 long-term objectives and related goals would be most appropriate for discussion at the upcoming March 2020 community event. So the areas that were identified as being the most important for community members to learn about were decreasing instructional turnover, increasing the number of business and community partners involved in career and technical education, increasing the percentage of students who perceive that an adult in their high, in their school cares about them, and completing the sales tax referendum projects on schedule and within budget. The committee plans to continue to explore recommendations for the goals shared by Mrs. Morgan, as well as goals related to communication. And our next meeting is going to be held on Wednesday, February 12th, at 6:00 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have curriculum advisory. You're waiting.
Good afternoon, I'm Marissa Byer, and I am the Vice President of the Curriculum Advisory Committee, and also a teacher here in Lee County at Veterans Park. We met twice this past quarter. Bethany Quisenberry gave an overview of ELA supports at the elementary level, district support for elementary interventions, and data on ELA learners. Our focus is on the lowest 25%. We agreed to delve more deeply in the ELA subsequent meetings, please. In November, Dr. Evelyn Rivera continued the discussion with plans to elicit more specific feedback from the committee in January. Candace Alaveto gave an overview of the textbook adoption process, and was asked to continue her discussion of the process at a subsequent meeting regarding specifics of the input at the school level. Currently, we are looking into more ELL and L-25 support staff, and looking into model schools for ELL supports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have district advisory council.
Good afternoon, my name is Scott Hertz, Chairperson of the District Advisory Council. Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Atkins and staff. You have before you the report on the two quarterly meetings we had, so instead of just reading that to you, I'll just make a couple comments and then answer any questions you may have. We've been continuing, I think, successfully in our goal to get the district advisory committee to live up to its mission of being more of an interactive, two-way street, and Dr. Atkins, with the help of Dr. Spiro, has been successful in getting staff to come to us with actual questions that they are looking for input on. And we continue to refine how we do that with the large of a committee as we have, and we do appear to be being successful in that, particularly the November meeting on the Innovation School. The feedback we got from the presenters after the breakout sessions was they got a lot of useful information that they hope to incorporate into the school and information as to how to engage parents and families better. So we, we hope we're providing the board with what it's looking for and the type of input that's coming from our committee. We did at the beginning of this quarter have a presentation on capital projects, we'll probably catch that in the next quarter of the report, and I'll let you know that one of the other things that came up is a concern that there is not great communication at the school level to parents. Was brought to the attention of Dr. Atkins, and Dr. Spiro committed to working with the lead principal organization. There are some schools that are exemplary at doing this, and he committed to having those principals that are excellent at it assist the other schools that are perhaps not as strong in those areas. And that was the point, that we see sometimes that we have these great schools and principals and staff that do excellent things, and our committee is trying to encourage the district to use those great examples as a model for the ones to do it, so you're not reinventing the wheel all the time. And in that note, a topic of interest that came up is the new mental health curriculum as a result of the new legislation going on, and we actually adjusted and changed the February topic for the upcoming meeting to be up on, focused on, how can the school district best inform parents about the content and the topics that are being covered in that? And again, the idea is to get some interactivity going on there so that the methods the, the school district and the individual schools are using to communicate this to the parents is one that's successful for both sides. Without a stand ready to answer any questions you may have, if you have any.
Did you have a question?
I just want to make a comment.
Oh, go ahead, please.
I just want to say thank you for your work with DAC, because clearly you're trying to take it in a direction that makes it more meaningful for the community and more meaningful for us, so. And thanks to staff for providing the support you need to, to accomplish what you're, you've set out to do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We do see it as a big change from when I, I've been on the committee forever, six years now, something like that. When I first came, it was strictly, staff would come and present to the committee and then they would, they would go, and it's, it's truly changed into much more interactive process, and hopefully that's, that's benefiting everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have equity and diversity.
Good afternoon, board, Dr. Atkins. My name is Dennis Quisenberry III. I'm the Chairperson of the Equity and Diversity Accountability Board. We have a few things to update you on. As you see there, Dr. Atkins presented some major priorities to our committee. They're listed there, I won't read all of them to you. We also had a presentation from Soretta Ralph about the student enrollment plan coming up for the 1920 year, and some recommendations for that also. In addition to, we had Ms. Duncan and Ms. Gold from Mariner Middle come out and give a presentation on the positive learning environment going on at Mariner, Mariner Middle. Ms. Gold told us that she's had zero suspensions in 20 weeks at her school, which we found very impressive, and we were in communication with her, asking her to share some of her stories with other principals and trying to learn more about what they're doing out there at Mariner, to share and try to get that same energy to other schools also. In addition to Ms. Crystal Torres Nunez, she's our diversity and inclusion coach, she's been working on a speaker series at the Success Academy, teaching them about soft skills, hard skills, and job skills for those students there to get them prepared for the workforce. Mr. Edie also had a training with the statewide Safe Schools Director of Equity Florida that was on November 7th, 2019, relating to our LGP, LGBTQ+ community, training teachers and administrators and staff in district about the ongoing concerns with those communities. And EDAC is planning to do some school visits, so that we can see some of the things going on in the schools. We had a presentation for one of our members who had visited South, and all the great things going on there in South, and there was a video from some of the things going on in East. So as a committee, we like to go out and see the schools, so we can give some proper recommendations, and also share the positive things that are happening. Any questions?
I just want to thank you, because I know I'm on your committee, and I think that the committee is really trying to move forward this year and make some difference. So thank you.
And I would just piggyback that. This is a very different report in terms of what your accomplishments and goals are for your committee, so.
Well, thank you.
For thinking about best way to move forward.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next is finance and advisory.
Good afternoon, board and Dr. Atkins. My name is Darrell Tablam, I'm the Chair of the FAC. Our main goal is to look for savings and ways that we can help the district moving forward. Dating back to our previous report, we had brought in the Grants Department, and we brought them back in October, and the new Grants Coordinator, along with Dr. Atkins, had determined that we did need more people in that department, which could potentially bring more money into the system and into the school, so that was a positive moving forward. That was in October. In November, we discussed the proximity plans and different funding options. A lot of us were interested in going with a lot of K through eight schools, which we would believe would save the district a lot of money. I think we're still looking into that one. In December, we brought operations in and discussed reconfiguring the schools, which continues on that K through eight, so we're still pursuing the options on it with all the experts we have on our committee. And we're really looking forward to February when we bring in benefits, because it was unanimous that we all believed that we could save the system a lot of money and help the staff members by bidding out on benefits rather than just keeping it within-house. So we're looking forward to finding out what they come up with, and hopefully we'll have some faces there.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank all the advisory committees and all the committee members for all the time that you all put in and take away from your own families, and we really do appreciate it. Okay, moving along, we-
Still need construction advisory.
Oh, I'm sorry, construction advisory. I'm sorry, Scott. Thank you too, Scott.
Good afternoon, board, Scott Rekenback, our lay is on the construction advisory. Unfortunately, the Chairman and Vice Chairman couldn't be here today, but I have Ryan's notes, so I'll read. We've had two meetings since we last met. Two major topics had come out. One was the actual procurement, which we did have a presentation from the Pyramid Division. Susan Malley, Frederick, and Tracy came in. We had a lot of community participation at that meeting as well. They went through the entire RFQ process, and how the scoring, and the questions, and the ranking, and it was a good hour and a half meeting. They read the letter that you all received from BSSW, which was the impetus to this discussion. They have asked, we ran out of time, and they asked to have a follow-up meeting. We had already scheduled another meeting, I'll describe that in a meeting for the previous meeting to this, so on the 11th, our next meeting, they're going to be re-entering the RFQ process again. I know that Frederick and his team have reached out to get specific potential changes, and there's been minimal participation from the outside vendors, other than they're dissatisfied, but they continue to reach out. The second meeting we had was in regards to the potential partnership with Lee County DOT and a Lehigh Acres Community Group for a bridge where we have Sunrise Boulevard, where the future MM Middle School is going to go. The participation, there was a lot of debate this meeting as well, went a good hour and a half. The committee, I believe, is going to recommend coming forward to you folks that, that the local Lehigh organization, community members that sent you the letter in regards to wanting some type of vehicle bridge and/or pedestrian bridge, that they lead the charge on this, and that both we as the district support and attend those meetings, as well as getting the input from Lee County Department of Transportation. And that's it. That's our update. Any questions?
Ms. Morgan?
So I think it was, what, three years ago that we went through the process of redoing how we did the bidding on, and contracts in construction?
Correct.
So, and I know we've had questions in the interim. I mean, this was a perfect time to come back after three years of experience working with a new process. This is what we should do all of the time. Anytime we do something new, we revisit it a couple years later and see what refinements we can make, and I haven't heard anything since, since that meeting, so that's great. Thank you for doing that. And I think it's, it's interesting that Lehigh wants to take the lead on that bridge, so.
We're not saying they want to take the lead. We, as a committee, were suggesting that they take the lead and we participate collaboratively.
So, the point person on that is what, Mike?
Would be Ryan Richards, in conjunction with Dominic Jamali, the Long Range Planner. Those would be the people that would start engaging with them to try and set up those communications and allowing them, people to take positions of charge that we can participate with.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, yeah, I was just going to say that I've been contacted by two vendors who attended the open house, and they were very impressed with not only the presentations, but the information they received, and the conversations they were able to have, which really helped them in moving forward, so.
It was a big turnout for that second event. Probably double, and a lot more participation from various trades, so I think it was a big success, and it's only going to grow.
Yes, thank you.
That's Frederick and his department did that one, so.
Thank you. I think we are, Ms. Reader, is that correct? We are, Ms. Patrico on the phone now?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Patrico, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. From above. Okay. Okay, so now we can move along. I have not missed anybody, right?
Correct.
I'm good?
You're good. I just wanted to say one, one quick thing. This group of chairs and co-chairs is, as you have noted, very good, very active. They're doing some really great things in terms of providing suggestions. For example, you know, the communications, those are, that's feedback that we may not have otherwise received, so we're able to work with our principal leads to hopefully improve communications throughout, throughout the district. I really like the, the visitation on EDAC, of visiting some of our schools. I think that's a very, very positive thing, so that's, that's exciting. I get to see some of the stuff, you know, literally in action, so. But it's just a, a really good group, and I just wanted to note that.
Great, thank you. Thank you for saying that. Okay, we are moving along to academic services. Our first will be TreeLine Elementary School. And if, when you get up here, if you could introduce yourself. The principal, Jennifer Wilkins? Did I pronounce it right?
Wilken. Everybody likes to put an S on it.
Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you. All right, can you hear me okay?
Please, thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Mitchell. I am Jennifer Wilken, Principal at TreeLine Elementary. The first slide that you, that you have here is TreeLine's map for success. Our school-wide theme this year is adventure is mine, and it begins at TreeLine. And that is our Cokie Frog, and he is our mascot, and he's been traveling around the world with us, and our first stop is going to be our accomplishments. Last year, we had an increase of our school grade points from 312 to 402 points. Very exciting. Thank you. This slide shows our third, fourth, and fifth grade math scores for FSA. The bars representing TreeLine's scores over the past three years. If you do look, the most recent bar is on the left-hand side, with the district average as the red dots. Overall, our students increased in their math proficiency by 7%. Our ELA scores, the same type of graphs, with the most recent on the left, we had an overall increase in our proficiency in ELA by 4%. Our science scores in 1718 were 47% proficient, and we increased all the way up to 54% proficient, which was clearly above the district average for an overall increase of 7%. So we made some, we made some huge gains with our students, and we're very proud of it. I included this table in here, because I wanted to show our progress throughout the last three school years, all the way from the 1617 school year with 1819 highlighted. Now, the dark green cells are actually the highest score out of those three years. The light green is an increase from the previous school year. So all of our school grade components increased from the previous year, with four out of seven increasing overall from the last three school years. So we increased from a C to a B school. And how did we do it? It's about our foundation. Our mission statement is to prepare all students to succeed in a caring, learning community. All of our decisions are made by our core values and based on what we feel as a school and the direction we would like to head. Our teachers are committing to create that classroom environment of high expectations and encourage our parents to take an active role in learning. What are our goals for this year? The two graphs at the top are our ELA and math goals. The bars, our columns, are achievement, learning gains, and lowest 25. They show the scores that we had last year, and the green bar above it is what, where, what we want to accomplish this year. And our science scores, we'd like to increase from 54% to 62% proficient. So those are our goals for this year. And with those goals in mind, for the 1920 school year, we'd like to increase to 445 points, which will bring us a school grade from a B to an A. And just to keep from distractions and confusions, I created this organizational chart at the beginning of the school year, so that we can focus on student achievement, and we don't have, we prevent any type of distractions from focusing on those student achievement goals. In addition to that, we're going to get better at what we're already doing, with the target of student achievement and learning gains, and the focusing on the elements that give us the highest yield. Student engagement, which is our Kagan structures, standard-based instructions, our high-yield strategies, which are numbered heads together, also a Kagan strategy vocabulary, and our higher-order thinking questions. Using assessments to drive instructions and sharing our best practices. And all of that while focusing on those four PLC questions, because again, it's all about those students. What do we want the students to know? How will we know when they have learned it? What will they do? What will we do if they don't learn it? And what will we do if they already know it? And this is a more detailed list of the specific programs and strategies that we use at TreeLine. A couple of them I'd like to highlight, one of those areas being our school culture, and really focusing on professional development for our teachers. Each Friday, we have a professional development opportunity for the teachers, whether it's vocabulary, whether it's focusing on text-dependent questions, and really pre-planning those, so the, so the teachers can have them prepared and ready to ask in our small group centers in ELA. And also, the teachers are taking the initiative to actually go out and observe other classrooms, and that does really speak to our culture at TreeLine, where not only are the teachers allowing them to come into their own classroom to observe, because that's nerve-wracking, getting observed by a peer, but the teachers are initiating that. They want to go out, they want to observe the model, any type of model strategy that they would like to see. And then also our positive behavior support. We put an emphasis on that. We have class compliments. We also revised our discipline process, and we are down, we cut our referrals in half at this time last year. So we're really proud of that, and partnering with not only our, our parents, but the school as a whole, and increasing that communication between school and home. And with that being said, thank you for your time, and any questions that you have?
Ms. Gittens?
Hi. Very good report, and congratulations on all of your success.
Thank you.
And I was speaking with some parents last week, and one of them said they were concerned that, you know, we as a whole are focusing so much on our L-25s, that their middle or, you know, higher-level students are being kind of left out to kind of shift on their own, they're, they're going to be okay. Can you address how you balance that out and not have everything just focus on the L-25s? What would you tell that parent?
I would tell that parent that during our professional learning communities, we just, most recently, and we do this throughout the school year- most recently, and we do this throughout the school year, with each grade level, we have a data analysis protocol. And not only do we look at our lowest 25%, but we look at those students that are on the bubble with proficiency and also our enrichment students, because we want, and enrichment, I mean those students that are the level fours and fives, because we don't want them dropping back down to just showing a level three at proficiency. So, we're targeting specific strategies, for instance, novel studies with the students, because we want them to be able to think critically about a text and be able to pick out the components of that comprehension piece by themselves. But sometimes they need a little help on that strategy getting them there. So, the enrichment piece is really that independent guided discussion and facilitation for our enrichment students. Now, for our on-grade level, we do, and this was in my data chat, I talked about this, our bubble students that kind of go from a level two and sometimes will be a level three, but will teeter back and forth. And we really concentrate on our intervention. So, at each grade level, we have a walk to read. So, we separate them based on their, target the strategies and standards that they actually need and bridge that foundational gap, because sometimes with our lowest 25%, it doesn't look the same as what our bubble students need or our higher-level students need. So, that's another piece of the component and strategies that we use is our intervention, as well as talking about those strategies that we're going to use for each of those levels and not leaving out any level in our data analysis protocol.
Excellent answer. Maybe we can have you on tape so those parents can play that and understand how we do look across the board.
Thank you.
Any other question? Ms. Fisher?
Yes. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. I'll have to come to Tree Line. I have a question about your positive behavior support. Like, what are some of the strategies that you believe led to you being able to reduce your referrals by in half?
One of the areas that I really feel is, we're a school together, we're a family, and we need to work together to make sure that students are following the Tree Line expectations. And we say it regularly, be respectful, responsible, and safe, and we incorporate that. One thing that we do is a character word of the week. We're on the news every morning talking about character and character building, because I do really believe in developing the whole child academically and behaviorally. And that's an area that I really feel that we need to concentrate on is that character building, which also incorporates our theme. We're just about to go into another aspect of our theme, which is kokis for companions, which delves into that sympathy and compassion for animals. We're partnering with the Gulf Coast Humane Society. And we also incorporate writing letters to veterans and Children's Hospital, those on the character side. Now, the other piece of the positive behavior support system, we have individual cash that the students can earn. Some are motivated extrinsically, some are motivated intrinsically, and so we try and bridge the gap between both of those. In a perfect world, we'd want them all to be motivated intrinsically, but we know some of them need those incentives in place. So, we have those that they can earn individually. We also have classroom, we call them gold kokis, but for walking in the hallway, having a good class at specials time. And so, those specials teachers will fill them out, well, actually hand them out to the other teachers. Anytime another teacher sees them in the hallway, they give them a gold koki too for following the Tree Line expectations. And it's just those, it's kind of like kachibing good, even in the lunchroom, things like that, that they do that really stand out, and that builds the culture of the school. The other piece of that puzzle too is the discipline process. So, something that I brought from my former school was behavior intervention forms. And I really, again, my firm belief is that we change and figure out what the core of the behavior is and try to target and change the behavior component, because it can look very different from what the child is showing versus what's really going on. So, it's partnering together and figuring out what that is between home and school. And it's a form, the teacher fills it out. If there's some concerns and we reach out to the parents, there's some questions on there about, you know, what were you doing? Did you get what you wanted? How, you know, and making a plan for the future to correct that behavior.
Great, that's awesome. Do you have any use of mentors at all?
Yes, we do. We have a mentor program, so at the beginning of every school year, which is another component just added in to support our students, that real connection between, having that adult on campus that they can connect to is really important, because sometimes they don't have that at home. So, we, the teachers recommend the students at the beginning of every school year, and it's really a fluid Excel sheet where we add or remove names depending on how the students are performing behaviorally, or if they just need that support in place, you know, that just that one person that they could go to. And they do a check-in, check-out with that, with that individual each day. So, somebody is always excited to see them. At the end of the day, they're asking how their day went, and then encouraging them if it was, if it was a difficult day, what can you do differently? And if it was a great day, celebrate with them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Jamali?
Thank you. I love everything that you're doing, and I think it's awesome because it's proofs in the data, really, you know, what you're doing. If you could name one thing that attributed to your success from the C to the B, what would that be? Just one thing that somebody could do.
One thing, my goodness. I think for our math scores, something that I haven't touched on yet is we do offer a math tutoring program. And part of the math tutoring program is also in morning service. Parents are more apt to drop them off in the morning than they are to pick them up in the afternoon, so that's been really beneficial. And how we address the tutoring is there's, the students actually rotate. So, they'll be with one teacher for about three weeks, and they focus on one standard. And then they rotate to the next teacher, and they focus on another standard, which is something that I haven't done in the past, but my instructional coach, who really firmly believed in it, and I was very excited to see our scores. So, that's something that we're continuing to do, is offer that program in the morning.
What time does your school start?
We're an 8:55 start.
Yeah, so that's a great, that works out perfect. That's good to know. All right, well, thank you very much. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Good job.
I think you've asked all my questions, but I would love it if you would do it with the reading as well. Do you do it for reading, or is it just math?
Math, we're doing that. We're doing math in the morning. And what we're doing with our fifth-grade students, because we were finding that they weren't making as much progress that we would like them to make. So, during, and this is parent support only, we do a PE waiver for them to get the additional help that they need, so that's during the school day. And they'll go through a text or an article and concentrate on those questions and the comprehension questions to try and get them to pull out the information from the article, whether it's starting off, whether it's going through the process of a close read, pulling out vocabulary questions, and then reading through again, and asking questions about the text and facilitating that discussion.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for everything.
All right.
Appreciate you. Oh, sorry, one more?
I just love your proactive, you know, everything. You're being proactive instead of reactive, and I really love that, so, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. You made this much easier than I thought it would be, so thank you.
Thanks.
We're friendly.
Okay, next, we have Bonita Springs Middle School Center of the Arts, and we have Ms. Laner? Laner? I know, I'm killing your name.
Melissa Laner.
Laner. Melissa. Ms. Melissa.
It looks much more complicated than it actually is. Well, thank you so much, superintendent, board members, and audience for allowing me to be here today to talk to you about the amazing things we have going on down at Bonita Middle School, the most southern middle school in the district, and we feel that quite often. But we love to have visitors. If you're ever in the area, feel free to stop by, and we can show you in person. So, one of the things that we are highly focused on, having been a B school for the last three years, is to become an A school. It would help our teachers quite a bit. It would help the district. And so, we've adopted the slogan, hashtag on our way to an A. And I've promised our teachers at the beginning of the year, we will be an A school this year, and everything that we've done this year is driven toward that. And we also decided a couple of years ago that we were a center for the arts that was acting more like a school with arts rather than a center for the arts. We have, what's unique about us, in addition to traditional arts, is we do have a steel drum band that was gifted to us through a grant thanks to the Bridge Fund. We also have an incredible dance room, and that draws a lot of students from the Bonita area. We do a lot of very special things with the arts, and we wanted to celebrate that and become more of an art school. So, you can see that our motto changed to educating hearts and minds, which aligned with our vision and our mission. Okay, so just a few notes of pride for us. We are fairly small, as far as the middle schools go in the district. We have 931 students. Doesn't feel small every day, but it actually is one of the smaller middle schools. We can focus more one-on-one with students. Obviously, arts-focused, Cambridge, full-time gifted. This year, we operated on a five-by-five schedule with about 58 teachers. You can see about 70% of our student population identifies as Hispanic with 244 ELLs. We are selected for every ELL audit out there, and Ms. Rivera, Dr. Rivera can testify to that. 70 of those are monolingual, many of whom's their first language is not Spanish, it's actually a dialect, which is incredibly challenging, but also a very unique opportunity for us. You can see our second population is white, and then we have a few black students, Asian students, and those who identify as other. So, I align this presentation today with our district goals, so we can talk about how we support the district. We really wanted to decrease our percentage of chronically absent students this year from 12% to 11%. It's one of our challenges every year. We're currently sitting at 10.64%, so we're aligned to our goals halfway through the year. And this really started when I visited Tree Line a few years ago. We bought a sandwich board. I was at Tree Line, and they had a countdown timer for every, actually, it was a count-up timer, for, it was a countdown until you were late, and as soon as you became late, it started counting up for every minute you were over, every second, actually, two minutes. And I thought, you know, we really need something on our curb side to tell students just what's going on and how important attendance is to us. We purchased this a few years ago, and every day it's updated with cute little slogans and talks to students about how many were absent, how many were tardy, because we need to focus on that. You can see quarter one, and we know that to be an A school, we have to be at 95% attendance. Quarter one, we missed the mark, but quarter two, we were there. And that is still a focus, and I'm going to talk to you in a minute about everything we're doing to meet that goal. 50% of our students arrive by bus, 10% by parent, and a whopping 40% walk or bike to school. I pray for that community when we dismiss every day at 4 o'clock, because it is just a deluge of students into the community at one time. It changes dismissal procedures that most schools might have. We have to dismiss separately all of those bodies of students because we have safety and security issues that they may not have. It's very challenging. We had to purchase, actually, we didn't purchase, we were gifted a grant to buy an additional bike storage area, because not all of our bikes fit in, the one that was given to us by the district. But that is the culture of our school, and if you go down to Bonita, Mrs. Morgan, you can attest to that. So, some of the initiatives we started this year to make sure students arrive to school is we do a Wacky Wednesday Wacky Wheel. And we actually started that last year. I have a very gifted building custodian who built a wheel similar to Wheel of Fortune. And every Wednesday, which is our best-attended day, students are selected either by good attendance, good grades, rise in test scores. We mix it up every week to keep them guessing. They want us to celebrate any Ds and Fs. We've not done that yet, but we do celebrate the successes. So, kids earn the opportunity to come up and spin the wheel, and on that wheel, there are different prizes that they can earn. You have to know what middle school kids want. Typically, it starts with food, and then it becomes more specific to takis. And if you don't know what takis are, I encourage you to Google. They're very, they're like cash down in the Bonita area. Then, every Friday, we have music and treats. So, what we do is, along with my social worker, SRO, and myself, we man the doors for students walking in either from the bus or from the neighborhood, and we have music going, and we just say, "Welcome to school. I'm glad you're here. Take a granola bar while you're here." Of course, we have free breakfast, but it's that extra step that they have a snack throughout the day. It's that extra step of me seeing their faces and thanking them for showing up. We offer dress-down passes, which are the second form of currency in the middle school level, and we do that three different ways. We do a PBS, caught you in the hallway if they're doing everything good. Our PBS slogan is pro, prepared, respectful, and on time, thanks to Mrs. Mayer, who was my predecessor. And so, when we see students doing things in the hallway, we get one of these little passes, we sign it, and they get to dress down, and they love dressing down and not having to wear a uniform. They can also wear a dress-down pass by spinning the wheel, and the final one I'll talk about during our quarter four prize drive. We have a grade-level competition in our cafeteria, so there is an entire bulletin board devoted to attendance that goes by sixth grade, seventh, and eighth grade. They compete every month. And then, the winner gets cookies at lunch, ice cream bar, something food-related, because food really speaks to middle school kids and their growing bodies. Our quarter four prize drive, and this is thanks to my, our incredible social worker, not mine, our incredible social worker, he came up with the idea that we have 15 weeks left of school. So, students, everybody across the board earns 15 dress-down days automatically to be awarded in May. However, for any day that you miss during any week, one of those is removed. So, we're working on the backwards math in middle school, and they are learning that to get all of their dress-down passes, they could have two weeks basically of dress-down passes, they have to show up every week from now till the end of the year. I will tell you just a quick attendance success. We had a young lady, and it's, you know, the hard work of administration is having to do those tough things that we know are going to benefit students but are tough in the process. And, you know, we had a young lady who wasn't coming to school, I mean, just a chronic, chronic absence situation, and we had to go through all the steps of attendance. She is now living in a shelter. The bus brings her to school and back, but she comes to school every day with a completely different attitude. She is so stable than she was when she wasn't coming to school, and it was just working with that parent and saying, "This is what's best for her beyond any challenges, and we can help you with those challenges." Okay, so let's talk about behavior. Behavior, we are working to decrease our number of in-school suspensions from 22 down to 17, because I want them with our content area teachers. We're currently sitting at 5.3%. We've had a tremendous improvement in that, and there are just a plethora of reasons. I can tell you beyond what I'm going to talk about in a minute, a lot of that is my personal philosophy that changed over the years. I was a tough high school principal for a long time and felt like I needed to be tough, and middle school certainly has softened me up, but I still went in thinking I needed to be tough. Well, a couple of years ago, we had this great little student who made a bad decision to bring a pocket knife to school, and then bring it out toward another student. It's a very political situation. I made the decision based on a few different things, and he was arrested that he needed to go to the Success Academy. First-ever restitution hearing that I went to at the Success Academy, I met with him, I met with his advocate, and I learned more about him as a person. I learned about his struggle. I learned from his father after meeting with him. You know, they were here illegally. There was a possibility of deportation because of this, what he had done. He was living in one room with his father, the rest of the family, as is typical with a lot of our Guatemalan students. We're back home in Guatemala. Dad came with the oldest boy, and, you know, that's a lot of our population. And I just got to know him incredibly well and his story, and realized that he just made a bad choice, that he probably didn't need to be punished that hard for, that we could have probably talked through. So, I can tell you now, it was an incredible success story, and he kept coming to us, "I think I'm going to get deported." He is now an eighth grader in our school. This happened when he was a sixth grader. He is now an eighth grader. He was in a monolingual program his first year with us, and I think this changed him as well, this whole process. During seventh grade year, he was monolingual. He scored a level three on a civics test. He now maintains all As and Bs. He says hello to me every day, like we are best buddies. It's just, it was a change of my heart, more than anything you're going to see in this PowerPoint today. But I can tell you, we are using mentors. One-on-one is helping. One-on-one in a middle school is a tremendous asset. Middle school kids need counseling. They need somebody to talk to them. They need somebody to listen to them. We've tried some creative solutions as well for students who are really angry. We're dealing with SB behaviors that we haven't seen before. And so, a football becomes really powerful in an AP's hands. Out back will say, you know, "Let's just go take a walk, let's blow off some steam." And, you know, we've learned some of our students like that. They want to just burn off some steam, redirect, and go back. I have a five-year-old at home, so I know about redirection quite a bit. We've offered some resorted reflections and apology letters. Those are very popular in our building, and it practices our writing skills as well. We use stallion cards, so there's a four-step process before a student even receives a referral unless it's something incredibly egregious. And then, we have dress-down cards that they earn, that I mentioned. I can tell you OSS has very little effect on our students, and it was very easy for me before to send a student home. You know what? You know what? We, we use it now. If, if I've got a volatile situation where it just is not healthy for a student to be around another teacher or another student, but for the most part, parents are asking, "Can you please give them something else?" Because they're sitting at home, and it's a vacation. And, and I was not drinking the Kool-Aid before, and I am now. In addition to what I've not listed here, we do pizza with the principal, and I'll talk about Laps with Lainer in just a minute, but pizza with the principal is just an opportunity for those kids to come dialogue with me. What's going on in your lives? What do I need to know to, to make this school better? And then we do something called Lunch Bunch, which was a true original initiative at Benita Middle. We do a separate session for sixth grade, so they have the opportunity to leave the cafeteria with their lunch and go talk to other sixth graders dealing with issues that only sixth graders deal with. And our seventh and eighth graders do that together. It's not administratively run. It's through our counselors, who sometimes direct the talk. Otherwise, they just let the kids talk. What's going on in your lives? What can we help you with? Okay, let's talk about classroom success, which is the C in our roundup. Okay, so learning gains. Because of our high ELL population, we focus a lot on learning gains. And so you'll see buckets and bucket tracking in every one of our reading classes. In math, our L25 goal this year was to go from 52 to 57%. Benita is always traditionally good. We're just not pushing the mark to an A school, in that we became very ambitious with our goals this year. So you can see from our STAR testing, we are well below that mark. I won't say that STAR aligns with our end-of-the-year scores all the time, but it's still what we use every quarter to drive our teachers and drive our students. We made very little progress second quarter. I can tell you that we had the test, and I'm not going to make excuses, but we had the test sandwiched into some formative assessments, and I learned from that and said, "Okay, we need to look at the timing of when we're giving these tests," and, and talk to the kids about it and do more incentives. Our ELA, L25 students, our goal is to have them increase to 41%. We were sitting on 18% and 13%. Many of those are, some of those are monolinguals, but all, almost all of those are ELL learners. And when we talk about proficiency, you can see math there is much more ambitious. We want to go up to 70% proficiency. For quarter one, we're at 55; quarter two, 59, so we made good growth there. ELL has been stagnant, and I can tell you that we're doing quite a few things with ELL because of that. Science, we had a huge jump from quarter one to quarter two to get to that 50% mark, because we totally readjusted how we teach science last year. For ELL, I can tell you, again, the hard work of administration. I had to reassign three teachers. Wasn't a real popular decision right before the holidays heading into break. It wasn't necessary, though. And, and they understood. They understood, and they want the best for the school and for the students. We've done coordinator visits from the curriculum department, thanks to them. We've had incredibly intense discussions, one-on-one discussions with teachers about where do you find the data? What do you do about the data when you see the data? And what are we doing with teaching? We are focused everything now on ELL for, or sorry, ELA for our in-service day in February. We have many people coming from the district to help with that. And then any one of our teachers can tell you, I'm not a micromanager, but it's my job to step up and offer them a smarter plan if I see something's not working, and so I will help with that. In addition, for the students, we're doing a field dance incentive, because we started talking to the students and said, "You know, what happened, guys? You made very little progress, and we know that you're making progress on your formative assessments." And, and so they just didn't feel like it mattered. They didn't feel like the STAR test mattered. And so that was a time for us to talk to them, go, "Okay, yeah, it does matter, and here's why." I fired up my teachers right after break, because I was going to a quarterly data chat, and I told them, "One of the perks of my job is I get to go defend our data at data chats with my superiors." And I'd be happy to do that any day of the week, because I love talking about how great you guys are, but we need to prove it with the numbers." And, and they understood that. I'm going to start wrapping it up. Our middle school association slogan is, "It's messy in the middle, but it's where the magic happens." It is messy. People cringe when you tell them you work in a middle school. They visibly cringe, and they pray for you. Yes, Mrs. Gittens, you are correct. However, the discussions that we have with these kids, when you get one-on-one with them or in small groups, and I'll talk about this picture in a minute, they're about something. These kids are about something. They don't know who they are yet, but they desperately want to be something, and that's our job to get them there. A very smart woman named Mary Blackman told me when I came to Benita Middle, she said, "Middle school's all about making 'em human." And that's our job every day, make 'em human. I know what they need at the high school level. We need to make 'em human before they get there, so they can focus on that high school stuff. So what this is, part of that human touch, is we have something called Laps with Lainer. We just became a Blue Zone school this year, and so we're focused on healthy initiatives. And so I didn't know how this was going to go. This was our first time doing it, this picture, and I just went into the cafeteria, said, "Hey, guys, I'm going to go walk on the track." You know, it's 15 minutes into lunch. If you guys want to join me, we'll just come and chat. You guys can chat with each other. We'll do as many laps as we can. And I, I almost needed security with the number of kids that walked out. Half of them didn't know why they're walking out. If you know middle school kids, you know why. They just saw people moving, and they thought this would be cool. And, and so it, we did, we had a really good time, and, and I got to know them a little bit better. And so I think that wraps up our presentation. So thanks from our team to yours. This is my school improvement planning session over the summer. We also included our SAC members later on and our leadership team, but these are the core members that helped us write the school improvement plan. So, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
I just want to say thank you for the human touch.
You're welcome.
It works.
It does.
As my good friend Angela Pruitt says, "It's all about the relationships."
Absolutely. Thank you for that reminder.
Great work. Thank you. Great job.
Hi. Sorry I was late.
Not a problem.
I listened to every word you had to say, though. I have to say that your focus on the arts has been tremendous. I've had two children go through your school. First of all, let's step back. When you took over, you had very big shoes to fill with Linda Mayer, being your immediate predecessor, and I feel as if you stepped into those shoes beautifully, and you've made the school your own. The school is, is clearly now Miss Lainer's school. The arts have been phenomenal for my children, absolutely phenomenal. They had no appreciation for music until they went there, and all of your teachers that I've had contact with are completely amazing, but I do have to talk about Sarah Rigney.
Yes.
Because she, she pushed my daughter to try out for All County Band, and she failed the first time she tried, which was a beautiful thing, because she failed in, in sort of a safe arena. And Ms. Rigney continued to build her up until she tried out the next year, and then she made it. A little more disappointed with my son, who tried out this year and made it without practicing at all. That was a little bit of a disappointment. I kind of wanted him to learn the lesson that he had to practice in order to make it, but the other thing that's been super fantastic is the Lunch Buddies. So you guys know that I've had some family restructuring going on, and I wasn't even aware of the fact that Jack was attending Lunch Buddies and how much he was getting out of it. And Mr. Lightfoot, he's your AP in charge of discipline, right? The kids love him.
Yes.
Or at least my son and his friends love him. And to love the AP of discipline is really something, because he's kind of a big scary guy.
He is.
But he talks video games with the kids, I think.
He speaks their language.
He does. He completely speaks their language, and he's able to relate to them. And, and the last thing I want to touch on is, I'm sure, I don't know if you remember, you have a lot of conversations with parents, but I called you post Marjorie Stoneman-Douglas, and I was having a very parental reaction.
Yes.
I was very nervous about my kid's safety at the school, and you and I had, had a one-on-one conversation, and you gently guided me to where I needed to be as a parent and gave me the confidence that I needed to send my kids to school the next day. So, you know, in, in the moment, I kind of knew I was being handled, but only because, only because I sat on this board, I knew I was being handled, but you did it, you did it beautifully. And I'm just so appreciative for the work that you do, and you're right, middle school is, it's just not, I, I don't even know how you do it every day. So I'm really grateful. The kids that you sent home to me at the end of every day were much more manageable for me because of the work that you do in your school. So thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you. And I can tell you, a lot of this started with Mr. Lightfoot, who said, when we talked about what we do with our students to get them to come to school, and he said, "Do you think kids are excited coming to school? Do you think they're happy to be here?" And I just slept on that all night, and I went, "No, we need to do more. We need to do more."
Ms. Chivinelli?
Thank you. Did you call it Lunch Munch? What did you?
It's Lunch Bunch.
Lunch Bunch. Okay, I can, yeah, I didn't hear that correctly, so thank you.
And we just make an announcement in the cafeteria. Hey, if anybody wants to go to Lunch Bunch, it's in this classroom over here.
That's great. I li, I love that. And I also love the pizza with the principals. I thought that was a great little thing for the students, so.
They love it too.
And, and that one-on-one, and, and you, you know, you're, that's where your family comes in. You know, you're starting, knowing you have that relationship, and that's really important. So I just want to ask that. I was just curious about that. Thank you. Middle school is messy, but I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I know there's been some problems with securing instruments, musical instruments for kids, and, and as a person who taught language arts forever, I'm a huge fan of any of the performing arts and any of the arts. Do you have that, do you have that problem at your school, or if you do? What kinds of things, what kinds of programs or fundraisers do you have so that the children who can't afford instruments but who are interested in band can participate?
Well, I can tell you this, and I'm glad that you said that, because I'm a former language arts teacher too, and, and former band geek, so I have, they have a special place in my heart. I can tell you this, there's no obstacle that we're going to face if a kid wants to play an instrument, and, and Mrs. Rigney will take them from nothing to amazing, as, as Mrs. Patrica has mentioned. So we rely on the Bridge Fund quite a bit, committee down in the Benita area. We can call them for any need, big or small, and they will step in. In addition to that, we have private sponsorships through teachers, through principals, through parents, different parents will, will step up and do that. And then we offer rentals, you know, because a lot of times, a student will say, "Well, I want to try it out, but I don't want to buy it." And so we do a night where students can come in with their parents and rent an instrument just to try it out with the option to buy or not, but we're not going to let that hold them back. We will find them an instrument if they need it. So we get creative on Amazon sometimes, purchasing used instruments if we need to. That's a good question, though, because we don't want any barrier to hold them back.
Yeah, and of course, even the rentals are expensive.
Yes, correct.
That might be their food budget.
Correct.
But anyway.
That's a good thought. Thank you.
I, I'm always very, very supportive of that program, and, and I know that when you have kids that are involved in, they're gifted in music, it translates.
To every area of your life.
Very specifically into, into the classroom. So the earlier, the better with that. Hopefully, and I'm gonna, I know I've talked about this before, it's wonderful, because Benita is, Benita and Astero and some of our communities are just terrific with community support.
Yes.
But the unfortunate fact of life for our district, I've got to say this, is not all of our communities have the kind of community support, the socioeconomic levels of, of people that can provide. So I'm just hoping that this year, we do a really good job as a board, as a school district, to make sure that we don't forget how important the arts are and how the arts mesh in with the academics very, very specifically. So thank you for being creative with, with your kids and, and finding them, finding ways for them to participate in things they might not be able to afford.
Welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn.
Is there any other questions?
I just want to say, excellent report. And yes, we continue to pray for you one long year in middle school. And you know where you're supposed to be and not to be when you, when you do middle school. You decide very quickly. But thank you for all you do.
And I would just like to say, I witnessed your students at Shangri-La last year. They were excellent.
Thank you.
It was really a great performance. And I get, one thing that you said, it kind of like caught me, when you said that you're the most southern school.
Most southern middle school.
Southern middle, middle school, and that you feel that way every day. What does that mean? And why?
So, so we probably don't get as many visits as, as we would like. I will say that. And then the visits that we do get, which we love visits, is typically prefaced with, "Man, it's a long way down here." I've been told to keep my mouth shut, you know, because sometimes it's nice to be ignored, but I want to show, I want to show off our school. You know, we have a lot of great things going on.
I'm going to come visit you.
You should. Anytime. We'd be happy to have you.
Thank you. And thank you for everything that you do. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
When's Lunch Bunch? That's what we're doing.
Yeah, every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday. We'll be there. Thank you.
Everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda, we have instructional, oh, instructional materials, textbook adoption. And then if we could, when the presenters come up, because there are so many of you, if you would just please introduce yourselves. Can I keep this here on my? I had six presenters, or is it just the two of you?
No, no, that's not the PowerPoint. Here we go.
Good afternoon, Board. How are you all today?
Fine.
So our other presenters that will be joining us are actually teachers and students who sat on the committee, so they will be coming up individually for different adoptions when they're sharing with you. So this afternoon, we have the pleasure of sharing with you our textbook adoption process. Every year, we bring before the board the materials that we are looking to adopt. This year's adoption is on world languages. So Ms. Karen Baber will be leading us through our timeline and processes for this year.
Thank you. So I wanted to start off with just giving you a little timeline of our textbook adoption, and we usually start back in August. And we start with a publisher's meeting, so we invite all our publishers to come in. We give them how Lee County runs our, our, our adoption process and what they need to do in order to make sure that they meet our qualifications to participate. We bring them back in September for a publisher's showcase, and we have that in the Cluj-Sahatchi, and it's open to the public. And we encourage people to come in, meet with the, the publishers, have them talk to them, and it could be every teacher, students, community members to come in. In October, we started the actual committee presentation, so we had our committees come in. They spent one day listening to the presentations. They had a note sheet with our rubric. As they went on, they're listening and they're taking notes. The next day was our committee deliberation, and again, they used our rubric to really dive deep into those, into those textbooks and those publishers to really see what meets the needs of our teachers and students. And our committee members had already brought that information back from their schools, And our committee members had already brought that information back from their schools. So they are representing their schools. We had 12 members on our French committee, including a student. And then we had 19 committee members that represented every single high school and middle school that taught Spanish for the Spanish committee. So what I'd like to do now is introduce Ms. Nadine Kellums and Giselle Leon. They are from Trafalgar Middle School, and they want to tell you about their experience and why we chose, their committee chose French for French HMH.
Hi. I'm Nadine Kellums. I'm from Trafalgar Middle School.
I'm Giselle. I'm also from Trafalgar Middle School. And we picked the Huffington Mifflin Court based on these five different categories that we had. We had content, instruction, format, teacher support, and assessment. And what we saw with BND, which is the book that we chose, was that they had a lot of comprehensive writing components. And there was a bunch of different levels for tests, like people who are beginning, like novices, people who are intermediate, intermediate, and your higher achievers. They all had the same strategies and you, they were able to have different tests for all three people. So everyone can kind of have a test that's actually challenging them. And it included interdisciplinary connections like culture, art, music. So you learn a little more about how it's like in France and other French-speaking countries. And then for instruction, they had vocabulary that's useful. They had a website, had tutoring at home where students can practice using the language at home. And they had texts that were easier to read and they were engaging. So it keeps the students, I, like, for me, if the, if the text is boring, I don't want to read it. So they, the book had many engaging texts, which wanted me to read more about what it's like to live in France and Canada and other French-speaking countries. And the workbooks could be accessed, accessed online and, and paper copies. So you could work at it at home and stuff. And for format, it had the things you needed, like the standards for Florida. And they also had, like, it was easy to use, like, online. It was very easy to find everything that I, that students would need to do homework. And for teacher support, it was easy for the teachers to navigate and find what they needed to, like, all the lessons plans were nicely planned out, and you could easily see what you had to teach. And then for assessments, they had, you can easily create your own assessments, which was nice because you, every teacher has their own different style of teaching and what, how they want their tests. So you, it's easy for them to access it on a Word document and just change up to how they want. And the comp, and the assessments had writing, vocab, structure. So you truly are testing yourself on every single part of the lesson. And I, and the website had, it could generate your data and reports on student progress. So if there's some people who are kind of straggling behind, your data can show you that, and you can help them kind of achieve to where they need to be.
Okay, good. Can I?
Questions?
Yeah. Did you have something to share?
No. I, I came with my student. She is very, she's a wonderful speaker and totally able to explain exactly the process of what we went through. But would you have any questions for her?
Okay, yes, Ms. Morgan.
But first of all, I would say the same thing. I couldn't believe she's in, you're in middle school. After the conversation we just had about middle schoolers, you're very, very self-assured, and you speak very well. And you did a really nice job. So thank you for that. My question would be, why are you studying French?
Because, truth be told, I already know Spanish. So I wanted to learn a different language. And French is really interesting to me because there's like so many things that are similar and so many things that are different from Spanish. So I get to kind of explore how, explore a new language and explore their culture, like the culture of Canada and France and others, like Haiti and stuff like French-speaking countries. So yeah.
Wow. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens.
Bonjour. Don't ask me to say much more than that. I took it in high school. An excellent presentation. Question for you on the print and the digital. Now, you guys have the Chromebooks, correct?
Yeah.
So will you have your books on Chromebook?
Yeah. They had this, they had their own online, because they showed us the books and we were allowed to like play around with the website and stuff. They have their own website and it, in there is the book, and it's every single chapter. And they have like their supplementary, like text that you can read. And there was other stuff for, like, enhancing your learning.
Are the, are the books, like, the whole entire book is available to the students at all times? Or are there pieces that are accessible at certain times?
They'll be, the books are available offline. That's one of the criteria that we talk about with the publishers, is that due to internet issues throughout the district, not every student will have it at home. They need to be able to provide offline access for every student as well. So they committed to that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Questions? Ms. Chivinelli?
It was, you did awesome. I love the fact that you already speak another language and wanted to learn something else. That, that was actually really special that you added that for me, because I love the, I have had several exchange students in my home for many years. So the opportunity is endless when you do that. The, the world is at your fingertips. So thank you.
Thanks.
Great job, and go Tiger Sharks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Romelia Rodriguez. She's from Estero High School. She's our, she was representing our Spanish committee.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hi, Betsy. Let me see. So I am a teacher at Estero High School, and I am also the department head at Estero High School. And what we did is we worked together at the district level. But before we came to the district, the vendors provided us with a username and passwords of the books that they were trying to sell us. And in my department, and I'm sure in other departments as well, we looked at the books in our PLCs, during our PLCs. It took several times to do it, by the way. And we had to come with a consensus of the books that we liked. At Estero, we actually looked together, like I said, during the PLCs. And we were looking specifically for opportunities for the students to practice, but also for the teachers to have feedback of that practice. And we also looked for engagement with technology, because most of us, our students, loved the engagement with technology. And we also concentrated on the higher-order thinking. So some of the books that we actually liked had the higher-order thinking questions already embedded in the textbooks. After that, we came to the district and, like Karen already explained, it took two days. It was a two-day process. We were divided into groups, and every group had a task. After we completed our task, we came together and we actually voted for the books. And we kind of weed out, weed out some of the books that we didn't like, and we kept, you know, the smaller number. And then we came back. I do remember that Karen wasn't satisfied at one time, and she says, all right, we have to vote again. And I think we did it like three times, that voting.
We actually don't vote. We come to consensus. That was one of the activities they did, was to rank and do a rank. And so we made sure everyone had their voice and was able, the numbers weren't matching up. That's why we did it again.
Right. So anyway, so we were in general particularly, particularly impressed with the things that we did not have years past with the textbooks that we had. So we actually came up with the book, we selected Senderos. And we really loved the speech recognition that that vendor offered in their books, the connection with the teacher, and obviously, the teacher-student that, you know, you can have the feedback. And then the teacher support, the new perspective on culture, because some of the vendors actually, it was pretty outdated. So we really liked the new perspective in culture. And the digital, obviously, was a plus for us, the accessibility. And apparently, they update their videos every week. So that was like amazing for us. Because the prior vendor that we had was offering the exact same videos that we have right now. So nothing had changed. That's why we decided to go with Senderos. The flexibility, obviously, and rubrics and webinars. Are there any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I have a quick one.
I just want to say it's good, oh, I'm sorry. I just want to say it's good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Romelia was in my hallway. We were in the same hallway.
Correct.
At Estero. She's an awesome teacher, and you still have different levels of Spanish that you teach.
I do, yes. And...
Actually, we talked last night at the curriculum advisory about this world language adoption. And Candace mentioned that 31% of the Spanish and French teachers participated in this. So, I think, didn't you say that 100% of the French teachers were on board with their?
They did. They came to consensus. We didn't have any sideways thumbs. So we reached it very quickly.
I guess the Spanish teachers were more discerning.
Well...
No, but you came, no, I'm just...
Let me throw some facts out there.
I know her.
Twenty-three countries that speak Spanish and 38 that speak French, but the, the population of the Spanish-speaking countries is greater than the French. Therefore...
Thank you for clarification on that one.
Yeah, no, I'm pulling her leg a little since I, I know her. But it, it's really good to hear that so many of the teachers and the students are involved in, in selecting our text. Because, you know, the, the students really lend a different perspective on things. And I think lots of times, things that appeal to teachers, if the students are, oh, that's terrible, or that's boring, you're going to have a problem with it.
Yes.
So thanks for participating, and good to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Ms. Gittens?
Good to see you as well.
Hi.
On the one page, it says class set and digital, class set and digital per student cost is $164. Is the class set kind of divided over the total number of students? Or, I was just a little confused about how they came up with the 164. Was it 164 per student?
It's per student. It's class set and digital per student cost. It was, it's per student. So we were spending $164 per student. That included everything. So if it is class set, it will be actually a little cheaper if we decide to go that route.
Okay, but there's just one class set in the room?
It's, it's based on, a class set is based on 30 kids.
Right.
So that, that number is based on, it's $164 per book, but it's based on when we, because we get, teachers get free.
Right.
Based on that 30 books.
Right.
So it's still, it's every student. And we're looking to do one for every student, but it will depend on...
A hard or a digital?
Yeah, hard, both.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So it, it kind of, we go through and view and see what will work best for our teachers and students, whether it's a class set and just have the 30 books in the classroom, or one for each student. So that's really up to, yeah, we get the feedback from the schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
So my comments are really not about the textbook selection. I just, I have a comment and a question. First of all, with respect to the different perspective you mentioned between the students and the teachers, when we were speaking with your former boss, Ken Savage, Jacob...
Aliva.
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 The chancellor. He mentioned research that he had read, talking about how the millennials, the millennials, the exers, the wisers, and everybody else has a different way of learning and, and, well, and teaching. And one of the biggest challenges that we have is that in our institutions, we have all of these levels with very different expectations for how they will learn and how they will be taught, et cetera, et cetera. I just thought it was really fascinating. And if you know that research, I'd love to, I'd love to read it. The other, the comment I would like to make is, or the question I'd like to ask, so I'm a child of the 20th century. Modern languages, French was the language of diplomacy. German was the language of science and math. We are in the 21st century. We are teaching only European languages. I'm really curious about why we aren't doing something about, you know, Chinese and some of these other languages, particularly if the goal is to, you know, introduce kids to the, the bigger world that will have a much greater impact on them in their 21st century lifetime. So I'm just curious.
There are some schools that do Mandarin, are used to.
Are they used to?
Mm-hmm. Tyce does Chinese.
We have some schools that offer the additional. So when we go through the adoption process, we look at how many students are enrolled in the courses and the number of teachers, teachers teaching those courses. And then that's where we determine where we're going to do a district-wide textbook adoption. We do have other schools offering outside of those, these courses, but these are the two that our students are most enrolled in.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
I have a general textbook adoption question, and I don't need the answer today. But I remember sitting in on one of those publisher forums or whatever at FGCU, where, you know, if I was teaching criminal law, for example, I could choose chapters from the six different books they published. Three chapters from this book, four chapters from that book, two chapters from that book, to really make sure the materials that I was presenting to my students were perfect for the course that I was teaching. Do we yet have that capability, K-12? If so, are, is there potential we could take advantage of it? Again, not a question I need answered today, just a curiosity.
Unless you have an answer.
I don't have an answer.
I'd like to ask for clarification. Are you talking multiple publishers, so multiple textbooks, or within the same? Because one of the things we do have access to within our current resources is when we adopt, especially our ELA in math, we get access to multiple grade levels. So as we talk about interventions and enrichments for our students, even though we purchase the third-grade materials for our third-grade classrooms, our third-grade teachers have access to the K-5 materials. So they can go in and pull resources from grade levels below and above to make sure that they're meeting the needs of their individual students. So I'm not certain if you meant there were multiple...
No, I mean like one publisher. So let's use civics, for example. I don't know who our publisher is for a civics book, but they have to, they have to have more than one civics book that they offer. So the committee could go in and look at the chapters in the various textbooks and create a textbook that's perfect for Lee County teaching civics, if that, if that makes sense. Because, you know, as a teacher, you go through a book as it's presented to you, and some chapters are better than others. And so pulling from the very, it, it might not, we might not have the capability at K-12. I know we have at university level. I'm just wondering if we have it here.
The publishers will bid a certain book, and that's what goes through the state adoption, which is what we follow. So at this time, most publishers only bid one book, although Vista actually did bid two books. They bid the Senderos and the Santillana. And they did offer us to, if we, when we adopted, they did offer that other book for our teachers to have digital access to. So that is something that we will get as we go through with Senderos.
But I think you're, you're speaking about them creating a book just for...
Yeah.
The class. Taking from here and here and here and making a book. We don't have that right now, do we?
No, because of the way they bid.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Chivinelli?
So I just have a question. How do we encourage more students to learn the French? Because I saw that it's costly, it was, you know, Spanish was more costly than the, the French. And I think it's just because of the students, it's who are, you know, in the class, you know, signing up for the class. And I know my, I had my daughter take Spanish as well, because I mean, you know, our, our community is, we're half, you know, speaking Spanish. So we need to know that language. So I, I thought that was interesting, not knowing how we could encourage. I love the fact that the student was crossing over into the French. It's much easier, from what I understand, when, so my French students, they, they knew Spanish when they would come from, the exchange students. And they said it was much easier because of their, the languages that they, they knew, they were fluent in several. But that, that was, Spanish was like their second language as well. So I just don't know how we can encourage our students to increase the French, you know, and learn, learn French. I think that's a, I thought that was kind of great. And then to answer, Gateway Magnet used to be a multicultural school. When my daughter attended it, she opened it. And we had, they had actually Chinese teachers come from China and spent, you know, six months at this, at the school. It was a great opportunity. And they, they did things at that level, you know, and taught in the classroom. And it was really, that was something. And I guess that's just the gate, the grant at that point in time, but it was a nice opportunity. So I think that we need to probably see more of that, like what you were talking about. So, Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, we used to have a grant in the district for Chinese. I know we had it following Stumber Middle School, where you could select Spanish, French, or Chinese. But then at some point, and this is literally back in the early 2000s, I think we ended up losing that grant for whatever reasons. But maybe there's other opportunities out there, because, you know, I know Mandarin-Chinese is, is, I think, the most widely spoken language in the world, other than English, is pretty universal. But, but we don't teach it very often in the United States.
No.
But it doesn't, it doesn't, I think, afford, you know, some of our students that, that want to do something internationally, you know, later in life, a great opportunity if they can master a language like that.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
So I just want to finish up. The estimated cost, thank you, Romelia. The estimated cost is $1,875,675. And that's, that is just an estimated cost, but it's based on this year's enrollment. So when we look at the numbers for next year and who's enrolled in those classes, those numbers can change as well. And then we do want to let you know that we do have our materials review site open. It's on our district instructional materials website. It is available for anyone to come in and view. And we leave our first and our second choice up. So if anyone wanted, so for some reason, something happens, we have our second choice that is listed there as well. Any other questions?
No. Do you have one more speaker or no?
Uh, no, we had, in case we needed her, I had Dr. Rivera, just in case if we needed. She also helped with our adoption process.
Perfect. Thank you so very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will have our OSS mid-year briefing. Presenter? Presenters are Ms. Jessica Duncan, Mr. Chuck Bradley, and Mr. Brian Magnan.
That's a group.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We shared some information that hopefully you've had the opportunity to review about our mid-year data for out-of-school suspensions. So, we wanted to share just a little bit of history with you. Our schools collect data in CASL system for anything that is a minor or that's not related to out-of-school suspension. But then they put their other information into the district support application. And in that is any OSS or any CESSR, which is reported to the state. So, and CESSR is the School Environmental Safety Incident Reporting. So, there's a number of categories in that area that we are required to report to the state.
Just a last note on the final bullet with the two sub-bullets. With the two systems that we currently use, teachers across the district use the CASL system to enter the referral, which gets automatically sent to the administration to designate to address the referral, the incident. And then it is necessary for us to upload the information, the CESSR items, into DSA or mainframe. And we also ask, are asking the schools to capture the OSS data, which helps us in reporting not only to you, but to the state, and also to our community partners that have, you know, agreements with us.
So, some review of the data that's currently taking place. Schools review that data. Principals do get an update from their CASL every day so they can look at that daily. We have data chats. We are also doing work with schools every day through our team. So, I know one of the, Brian has gone out, Mr. Magnan has gone out multiple times to schools to not only talk to them about discipline, but also build that relationship with schools, because sometimes those conversations are, are difficult to have about trying to work to reduce suspensions and maintain students in school. So, he has been doing that each week. And then often, Mr. Bradley will go out from the restorative practices end to help the school develop those skills as well. And this is some of the data for the district. This is broken down by race for OSS. And in this one, you can see the comparison from last year. And what this ultimately results in is last year, there were 6,472 days of OSS total. And this year, we have 3,645.
Still too many.
Also have the information here by incidents, so the top 11 incidents.
Just ask a good question. Go ahead. When you said the 600, does that mean the days, OSS days assigned?
OSS days assigned, right. So, the data in that just shows the incidents. And then the 6,000 would be the total days. And then this year would be the 3,645 total days from those incidents.
My question is on the first one that says district-wide out-of-school first semester, 18, 19. Okay, I may have been looking at this wrong, because.
Excuse me, real quick. I just want to make sure. Is it easier for you if you are asked questions as you're going through this? Or is it better for you to go through this and then questions be asked to you afterwards?
Way is fine. If it helps to ask while the graphs are up, that's fine.
So, would you all prefer to ask questions as it's going through for this particular one?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, thank you. The one I was looking at on the black students there with the, the blue is this year, and that's just first semester?
Yes, that's first semester.
Okay, because when I first looked at, I was thinking it was year, there's one that says year-to-date. And it, it would make it look as though we're only halfway through. And so, we are on target to do the same thing as last year. Can you address that?
That is first semester. So, if you look at the orange, that's first semester. And then the blue would be first semester. So, we're at a little bit over half.
Again.
From last year.
I was thinking that was a year. That answers it. So, what do you think, though, is causing it to be half from last year?
Well, and we'll get into that in our next slide. So, I think that, are there any more questions on this particularly?
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, do you use data, do you divide up by socioeconomic and also by level?
We have not divided it far beyond this, but we know some things we need, want to look at are socioeconomic, gender proportionality at school. So, different schools look very different, even though their suspension might be the same. And then also days by race. And then we do have suspension by level that we look at, but we haven't broken it down into various subgroups.
Yeah, I think it would be really interesting also, not just, you know, are they a Level 1 or a Level 4 student for their testing? But also, I think it would be significant, are they ELL, are they ESE? Do we have figures on that?
We do for ESE particularly, because that is very critical to what we're doing in our coordinated, comprehensive, early intervening services, primarily looking at that subgroup that was pointed out of black students who are significantly higher than other students in the different, in the district. So, we're making some substantial gains in that area, as you can see through the semester data. But we still have a way to go to ensure that that subgroup, that discipline, looks like it does for other subgroups in the district.
Okay, but that might be, there might be a lot of significance also in the ELLs. And, yeah, just that, those were, those were the comments. Because as a veteran teacher, just thinking back over the years, where were my disciplinary problems? I had, you know, a huge, and I'll bet this is true for many teachers right now, too. If you're teaching a low-level high school reading class, chances are you're going to have more disciplinary referrals coming out of that class than your junior or senior-level advanced classes. Not to say that the advanced kids are little angels, but it's just a whole different thing. And so, I think that would be really interesting to look at them by levels and exactly what classes are these kiddos coming out of. And of course, a lot of the behavioral issues may stem from just academic issues with the kids that they feel like they're overwhelmed, so why don't they just act out? And so, that's, those are just some comments. So, whenever you get around to doing that, I certainly would be interested in seeing a deeper dig into the data and some of these cross-references on even some of the racial groups as well. Thanks.
Ms. Morgan, you had a question?
Yeah, so my question is really about levels, not Level 1 through 4, but elementary, middle, high, for some of these incidents. Because an incident of insubordination disrespect may be very different for an elementary child than for a high school child. So, I'm just really curious sort of how these various behaviors fall in the groups and whether it means the same thing for an elementary student as it does for a high school student and is the expectation, just because it's a state reporting mandate, out of line with the actual maturity of the, the emotional maturity of the child. So, I'm just curious.
We have a code of conduct for elementary and for secondary, but many of the definitions are the same. And coding of it is something that we've just started to dig deeper in. Last week, we asked that the Department of Education come in and do a review of all of the CESSR definitions with us. So, they came and we went through those for about three hours and to ensure that we were aligned with what their understanding was. Because we haven't had formal training or anything available to us as a district. And that's one of the things, as we get into some of the next slide, that we are working on for our staff and administrators so that they have a better understanding of the codes, of what would be appropriate, of what would constitute, say, an insubordination, a battery versus another type of discipline.
Okay, thank you.
Does somebody, yes, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so is the data disaggregated by school and teacher also? So, you know what I mean? So, sometimes you have clusters of students with reports coming out of the same locations.
Correct.
Disproportionate to the rest of the district?
Right, so we did provide some backup data related to that. So, by school, and then we know when we look at school that, yes, some schools have different programs at their school, sometimes the demographic. And that's part of the work that we're going to do also with the, looking at the proportionality of different groups and subgroups. And then, you know, you mentioned the ELL, which I think is very important to look at. And so, we need to dig deeper into that as well, as that will be an important component as we move forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
The last time we got this report, I did ask about, for one, the insubordination being so subjective. And we kind of talked about that. But I asked about the correlation between the academics of the students that were highest on this list. And so, kind of turning that question a different way. As you're showing that the OSS data is lowered for some students, can you also show that the academics for those same students has risen? Because it's kind of the back door to doing the same thing. But how are the academic levels of those students that are not on the list any longer? So, I appreciate that.
And I just had one question, too, when you were speaking about coding. Because I know it's, it's how we perceive it or how they perceive it. And so, it's an individual person coding this. Eat a piece of candy, it could be theft. Or, you know, it's like, it could be that crazy. But it is that, you know, it's up to that individual who's putting that mark there if those children are going to be on this line. So, how do we try to control how that all works unless we really clarify what that means?
So, that was one of our things through the Department of Education training. So, they came, trained our group. What we're developing now is an evening training that we plan on offering probably by next month for administrators, so that we can go deeper into coding with them. It's typically an assistant principal at the school that does the majority of that. So, try, trying to better define that for them. And then in many cases, especially for significant discipline, we will get that information in our office. So, we are doing, I'm going to move on to the next slide, because I think that will also help answer this. So, some of, one of the things we're doing is like an enhanced SAR committee. So, we have a team, which is very varied now, looking at these cases. And I know that's one of the roles that Mr. Magnan has played, is really going out to schools and working face-to-face with principals and going over that. And then sometimes, like you said, because it is subjective and the people who are in it are sometimes emotionally invested in that incident. And it's having that critical conversation with that individual about how to code and code that appropriately.
Well, but I, once it's coded, it stays there. They do not recode it.
If there is an error, we correct the error.
Okay, because that candy thing is a really true, that's a true story.
Well, there have been some cases that we have found in going over the situations that a school might have overcoded, for lack of a better description. You know, maybe they said it was battery and it was, should have been a physical attack, where, you know, it was the elementary school kid hit somebody. And they went right to battery. And it's like, no, this is a physical attack, because it doesn't meet that definition of battery. So, it's that type of stuff that's leading to the professional development work that we're going to be doing with our, our student services and student affairs folks at the different schools.
Okay, thank you. And I know that they spoke about this when we were in Tallahassee as well. So, thank you.
So, then with strategies and supports going on just beyond the data, but how do we look at what has changed so far? And how do we keep impacting that data in a positive way? And a lot of what we have done so far is to bring awareness to the information that we've, we've provided in meetings, in professional development. There was some conversation before about EDAC and Principal Gould from Mariner Middle, who went to that committee to share some strategies at her school where she's been able to significantly reduce suspension. And she is actually one of our four equity leads who is out supporting schools. So, we have four principals who are very strong in process and discipline and different things in that area, who are out supporting their colleagues as well. And then, do you want to talk a little bit about?
Sure. So, some of the things that we are putting in place, and we've been working with our PBIS program. And I want to thank Ms. Scott for being a good colleague and helping to make sure that we're shepherding our schools in, enriching PBIS. I just had a great meeting at Villas Elementary. They're coming on board this year. And I'm beginning to get out there and recruit our next crop of participants. Already am getting requests for deepening the training as well. So, we do see some great things. You heard some great things from some of the schools that presented today on what they're doing with PBIS. And so, we do see a lot happening around PBIS. And the, we're in that phase now of needing to go back and look at the data and make sure that we're seeing that correlation. I do share that with Ms. Gittens, to see the correlation between the program, the reduction in behavior incidents, and then the impact on academics. So, that's a piece that we're going to look at. As Jessica mentioned, we're also providing that technical assistance on attendance and behavior. And we're working deeply right now with some of our, our media schools in the district and making sure that we're helping them to shore up and fine-tune those programs to help assist their students. And then we continue to work with our schools on social-emotional learning. And we, we have some money that came through, through the Title IV grant. And we're getting ready to implement a piece of that social-emotional learning program with Success Academy and some other schools. We also, on the equity side, I'll let Jessica talk more about that, if you'd like.
So, we do have our four equity leads. So, they'll be doing some work there. We're partnering very closely with Jared Edie and Crystal with the work that they do. We are participating with their NAACP meetings, with EDAC. So, we are doing more in that arena and not just having it be a student services or an ESE, but really a cross-collaborative and very close work with schools. Some other things we're doing as we look at the data is if we identify a school with a need, like we had an elementary school. So, we were able to connect them with a grant through Kiwanis, where they were able to start a movement room in there to provide some strategies for that group of students. They had a new program at their school. And that has been one factor that's made a tremendous difference for them. We have a speaker coming to our next principal meeting that our equity team has identified as somebody who can share some information with our principals. In the afternoon, she'll be talking to our psychologists and social workers. And then she'll be doing a community component at night so that anybody who wants to come to that. For our code of conduct, some things that we're doing a little bit differently this year are, we are again going to work with student groups and principal groups. But we're going to have an opportunity for any principal to come in and give input or hear any of the changes being proposed through that before they get the handbook so that there's more information shared in that area. And that process is, is very transparent for them, and they do have input on that.
Jessica, when is the, the community?
That, I believe, is March 6th, I want to say.
Same day as the March principal meeting.
March 6th? Okay, thank you.
But we'll share information out to that and we'll make sure that we get it out in a variety of forms to the community. We just finalized the plans with her on Friday.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. In the community outreach, I know NAACP works primarily with African Americans. We seem to have a really high rate of OSS for our Hispanic students as well. Have we had any luck in finding community organizations that work for the benefit of the Hispanic or Latino population?
I don't have any information specific to that. I know when we're talking with the equity team, we're talking about all students. And even with our work with NAACP, we are talking about out of school suspension and really for many groups and different subgroups along with that group. So when we go out and we put forth these positive interventions, and, just, I don't know if you shared about some of the things you're doing with restorative justice out to schools. Those are things that are going to benefit all students. Now, our equity team, not specific to any subgroup, but they are doing a number of book reads and information and compiling some information for schools on different races and how to interact with students and support students.
And if I may, too, the NAACP, their, and Dr. Ickes, you can correct me if I'm wrong. They are definitely, when we're going out, it is part of the bigger picture. It's not just about African American. It is about all children and suspensions, period, regardless of what they are. Children of color, period. But for everybody.
I wasn't quite done.
I'm sorry.
I understand what NAACP stands for and its colored peoples, but I believe in Fort Myers, my experience has been, not that they exclude other children, but that the focus is more on African American. And what I was going to add was with the Hispanics, you have the additional issues of language. And that although many of our students, many of our Latino students speak English, we have the problem of the parents not speaking English or not speaking English as well. And that's why I brought that up about the Latinos because it's a whole different, it's an entirely different issue. And so I know it's sometimes, it's difficult to find those avenues, but I was just wondering what kinds of attempts and what's working at maybe at some of our schools that have a high Hispanic population.
Well, I will add that we did the community forum at Benita Springs Middle School, and we had a suggestion to make a connection there. So we do have that avenue to explore. Also, I wanted to mention that Tammy Scott and Shelley Taylor have been working with the ESOL team to provide support for attendance and behavior on ESOL nights. So there is, we are trying to make those connections and make sure that we have those opportunities in the Hispanic community.
Yeah, I'm glad, glad to hear it. Just a suggestion, I would add it in the presentation, just to show the efforts that you're doing with our students who don't speak English well or especially who have parents that don't, maybe even just don't understand the educational system as well as some of our English speakers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Morgan?
So I don't hear a lot from teachers, but I do hear one thing, and it's anecdotal. It's not data driven, but it makes me wonder. As we try to reduce the number of out of school suspensions, and we have schools that don't have, have not had or are not using high quality PBIS supports and high quality restorative justice practices, are we creating a tense environment for teachers to work in? I mean, I'm hearing that behavior is changing. Teachers are being subjected to behaviors that typically they have not experienced in the past. I don't know whether there's a relationship between our effort to keep kids in school and then not, not provide the support that teachers need to handle the behavior problems we're keeping in school. I don't know if there's a misalignment or not, but that would be my question. Again, I say it's anecdotal. I'm hearing just from some people, but throw the question out.
I think it's just exactly like you pointed, whether it's high quality PBS or the culture at the school. So when Ms. Gold shared at EDAC, one of the things she shared was that they have a very shared culture in their school with their teachers, that they feel really strongly that they are not really wanting that students to go home and play a video game for the way they acted in their class. They want to keep those students there. And the places where there might be more struggle and challenges is places where we would identify that there would be more work to do with implementing strong PBIS programs and restorative practices, classroom management.
And I guess then if that's the case, are we going to be more aggressive in getting in the schools? Because I think it does become at some point a problem for teacher retention. A teacher says, I've said, I've had enough. So I'm just, you know, do we have the resources we need to go into the schools where we don't have the confidence that we've got the high quality practices being used?
One of the things that I've asked our principal leads to do is really to take a leadership role in this specific area. One of the things that I've said to them is I really truly believe, you know, that as a principal lead, you're in this position for a reason. All principals are not created equally. They're not all as talented or as experienced and able to implement these things, which includes discipline. So one of the things that I, because we do have, you know, you have so many schools that we have to get to, and you literally have four of the executives. You have one, Mr. Mangan, and then, of course, they do the learning walks, et cetera. But it, that's why we need that position because that takes 15, 16 individuals and allows them to work with a very small group of individuals. And one of the things we've asked them to do is to focus on this piece because we want to make sure our teachers feel supported and not mask the numbers. You know, one of the things I continue to stress with principals as well as with our principal leads to check up for us is we want programs that actually change student behavior, not, not programs that simply take and remove numbers from the OSS because they don't mean anything if you're not changing behavior. So the other thing that I've encouraged them to do is, I said, any successful program of behavior management in a school has to have the buy-in and the support of the school staff. That means whenever you're developing that program, you should be developing it in, you know, hand in hand with your teachers. You know, so my, what we encourage is that you're working with your teacher leadership team, which also should include some support staff on there. And then you get that group's endorsement prior to implementing any new program. And if you do all of those things, then it's more apt that it's going to be successful. So, you know, that's one of the things that we're doing to try to support the efforts that they do because, you know, from a bandwidth perspective between four executive directors and Mr. Mangan that are specifically focused on that, we don't have the bandwidth to get to all those schools and make that evaluation. But with our principal leads that have five, let's say that they look after, or six the most, I think they have a better feel for what goes on. And then they can help that principal and really a non, because they don't evaluate them, so they can help them in a non-threatening manner.
Ms. Javonelli?
I want to echo a little bit what Ms. Morgan said because I'm hearing teachers tell me that they're being told, don't write them up, you know. And so then they want to, that's how they're reducing the numbers. And I think that it's important that we have the support to all these teachers that I'm in fear we're going to have the retention issue because of the behavior. And it's just because we're not supporting and it's the buy-in, there's, you know, several factors that, so why can't we have like a collaboration day for those schools that are successfully achieving that? And they collaborate with the schools that are struggling and trying to get everybody, because there's, obviously not everything is going to be, there's different environments in socioeconomic that's going to make it more difficult in some schools. But the successes and hearing them is probably, they're like, oh, I didn't think of it that way. And I think that's just really important because the understanding, then they're like, oh, yeah, I get it, you know? So I think that you're on the right track there because it's important. And I think we all support the restorative practices, but we need it, we need to do it and we need to get it out there into the other schools and these other principals that are not quite understanding it or their longevity has been, they've been, they're a hard, they're a hard teacher, you know, or a hard principal. And so they're strict and restorative is a little more relaxed. So it's a different mindset a little bit in the way of, the way of things are, you know, it's that whole millennial and so everybody, the learning and everything's, doing things different, perception. So I think that's important. The one question that I noticed that I, excuse me, I wanted to ask them was I noticed that the, the numbers that were pretty equal for most of the, the numbers were very fairly, except for the drug use possession was higher in the white than the other races. And I, and I'm curious if that's because of drooling and vaping. And I just kind of want to point that out and it's, and where it's at as well because I think it's important to, for people to recognize that this is going to be a very big epidemic soon if we don't really think about this.
And your observation is correct. We continue to have issues with drug offenses, particularly with vaping. We are addressing it. We are reaching out to some community partners now. There's an organization called STOP. That's a local organization. We're working with them. They're more concerned about the opioid epidemic. And in our district, we don't have a serious problem with opioids yet. Our more serious problem is on the drug, on the THC vaping side.
Right.
Well, I just, we just, I was just attending a meeting of the American Heart Association. I'm on that executive board and they would like to work with the school district on the vaping issue because they've taken it on as an issue as well. So I did get in touch, yeah. You've got a meeting with them? Awesome. Okay. So we've got that going on behind the scenes and hopefully that will come to fruition. But they, that's a really, it's a wonderful group and it's just kind of neat to see them take this on as an issue because it, you know, all the help that we can get from our community partners. Theirs is about, I think, the educational component, you know, educating the community, getting into the kids and helping, you know, spread the word so that we can help. And then I did tell them about the board, what you were considering in terms of the, you know, taking any type of action, again, with those other districts. Said that decision hasn't been made yet, but they had, at least the executive board had indicated that they would be supportive and kind of ask how could they help if that was the direction that the board wanted to go at some point. So just.
Well, and it is a community issue and that's, I think, parents need to be aware because that's, parents aren't really realizing, and the kids aren't telling them, they're not, it can be very secretive and they don't really know about it. And the parents don't have a clue. And, you know, I mean, a year ago, no, two years ago now, right at Parkland, you know, I remember a principal coming up and asking a student what that was. I was going to ask the student, but she, the principal got over there before I could at the table I was at and asked what that, you know, what was going on. And because the girl was explaining it and we were like, I just, and that was just two years ago.
Yeah.
So, Carrie, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
My question is about restorative justice. We very often in our representation of the district and talking about discipline mention that we have restorative justice. It's in all of our, you know, printed materials and all. And I, I believe it is not, like you were saying, created equal. It's not created equal at all schools. And at one point, we did have, you know, a person in the district that was championing that. And there are so many different processes and different things out there. And Superintendent, when you were talking and you said, if something is going to work in this school, are we at any point where we're going to really seriously look at restorative justice and what it entails? Because basically, it entails staffing and having more than one individual in that room. One individual in there makes it a babysitting. Two, you know, qualified people makes it restorative justice because that one person does have time to do the restorative piece with the students that are in there. Otherwise, you just can't do that. So are we looking to, as a whole, look at restorative justice at its, you know, at its peak and doing it properly or allowing each school to kind of do what they feel is best for their own school?
Thank you. Ms. Gittens for the lead in. Actually, we are just, we have a blackboard course that has been written and we have what we're calling a DIY folder for self facilitation at schools. But all of the professional development we're going to offer from this point to the end of the year is focused on three common practices that we would like to see across the district. Affirmative communication, which includes affirmative statements and questions. We're looking at using proactive circles. So these are all relationship building tools. And then formal mediation. So the professional development that we have developed is going to focus on providing awareness and also then skill building for the first two. We'll focus on skill building on affirmative, affective statements, questions, and also on using circles. We're going to create awareness around formal mediation, but because that requires a higher level of skill, we're going to offer that training in the summer. But we are targeting all schools and inviting all schools to come on board with that. It has been a concerted effort and I want to thank some wonderful people who have helped to build these resources. Sarah Thompson, April Thompson, who was very much involved in the original rollout, and also Francine Lutman. We also have others in the district through the Restorative Practices Steering Committee who have stepped up and said that they will help and they will help to usher this in. So we have a, we have a full force of champions that are ready to unleash this.
And in the schools, I mean, are we going to support them, let's say, with supplements or whatever for doing that as well? Or is it going to be someone that's just, that's their job and they get paid to do their job?
Well, I'm going to, to me, that's about two steps ahead. Right now, we're going to focus on creating the awareness and making sure people understand how to use it. And my goal is then I want schools to start thinking about how are you going to implement it locally and what does that look like in terms of the outcomes that we're looking for? Right now, I just want to make sure that we understand that we're focused on those three initiatives and that we have that basic understanding of what they are in the schools.
So basically, a full rollout, really, not until next year?
Okay. Can I ask, when you said you're going to ask them to join, why do we ask them to join? Why don't we just tell them that they all have to participate? Just like a chain restaurant, you know, this is what your menu is and this is what you're going to serve.
Right.
That's my analogy, I'm sorry.
I think I'm the restaurant business. It's people business, but.
What, why? Well, Mary has a question, too. Sorry, Mary?
No, I think.
After the question, if we answer.
I think Mr. Bradley was going to answer. Or do you just want me to ask mine? So I may be way off base, but 25 years ago, I had a peer mediation team at an elementary school as the school counselor. So I think a couple of things. We have, about three years ago, I went to a summer training on restorative practices. I know we had some people come in and bring us information. But I think that. But I think that our population grows and changes. Our teachers and administrators move from one area to another. Across the district, our populations are different. So we see different challenges and behaviors. And some of it's socioeconomic, some of it is cultural, all of that. It's, it's a moving target at, on our best day. But I think that we do have, in the state of Florida, principal autonomy at schools. So basically, we're doing all this at the district level. We're getting some state funding and some other funding from foundations, grants, and private entities. Yet, we can't say that in this district, we're going to use affirmative statements and restorative practices and mediation, which is highly, look at the research, highly successful and really works because it builds relationships. It puts the onus on the person. I mean, it's all of that. And this has been going on, you know, for years. So before I totally fade away, fade out, I, I just want to say this. I think we have to take the bull by the horns. And, and I know, Debbie, what you're saying is, why can't we just say, okay, if you're a Lee County school, you're doing this? But it's not that easy because you really need to get the buy-in. And people's personalities and life experiences are different. So, I mean, I don't even know what the answer is. I think we should have, if we have a district policy and we have a whole book full of them, people should be expected, if they want to keep their jobs, to implement them. But it still isn't that easy, you know? So I, the positive approach always works. But when you are dealing with the issues that you're dealing with and your audiences continually changing and your facilitators are continually changing, it's hard to get a grip on it. So I, I say, you know, good luck and I'll help in any way I can. You know, the mediation thing, the courts use it because it's successful. It saves time, money, energy, and the outcome is more positive for the public.
So one of the things that our team and our, our professional learning community that we're doing, we've identified mediation and mentoring as our, our two areas that are going to be our focus areas this year. And although we may not be able to tell schools they have to implement it, nor do we want to, because they do have some autonomy, we want to really facilitate that process for them if they want to. So we're gathering the research behind it, a process behind it, because sometimes it's not about that they don't want to, but they don't know all the steps to do it, or it seems overwhelming. So we want to prepare that for them. And then also give them the resources from listed from schools that we know have super successful programs and are using them very effectively.
That's great. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay. One thing, can we also see the comparison of the ISS and OSS? If you have that data? And are we providing more support for the schools that are more challenged, that don't have the resources, that, you know, have, have the overcrowding and all of that? And discipline is an issue because if you put same type of person, a plethora, in one place, then you've got issues potentially. So what are we doing to support even some of the schools on the list that have the highest? Are they our highest priorities and first to look at and to lend support?
So I think it's multi-leveled in terms of the way that we're supporting. I know that Mr. Mangan is going out and he's working with them on their data. We want to make sure that schools are using the code of conduct correctly, that they're using the systems correctly, their coding correctly. So we're trying to make sure that all of that is happening from his end. I know that Ms. Scott and Ms. Lutman go out to make sure that they're using the MTSS system correctly. We know that Lori Brooks goes out and Mary Lynn Rodriguez Rodriguez to make sure that they're using the mental health team process correctly. Mr. Parfit makes sure that we're using the threat assessment team system correctly. So there are a lot of systems in play in helping to support school safety and also student behavior within our schools. So yes, we, we are making those contacts with our schools and helping to support them as we see need or as they request that need.
And don't, don't forget also, we have tiered funding. So you have a third, tier three school has funded it, receives a greater allocation than what you're going to see at tier one or tier two. So that also impacts the resources the schools would have available to them. And of course, the student composition and the, the challenge that the school has is what qualifies it for to be at the higher level.
Ms. Wong?
Yeah. The Prevention Center came into being so that we wouldn't be sending certain group of, I guess, mostly vaping? Isn't that what it's focused on?
It's really for, the two main things that a student can be sent for is alcohol or drug possession.
Okay. So I know it's, it's, it's early. We haven't even had a year with that. But are there any just preliminaries that you can say about recidivism with, with that? And how well it seems to be working? How many kids do we have in there right now? Last I heard, it was 19.
We have 89 who have successfully gone through the program since.
Through it, but at any one.
Fifteen are there right now. Three are scheduled to show up tomorrow. Sometimes it gets short ordered notice about who's coming there. But average, anywhere from 15 to high is about 22 at one time in there. For the students are there for about a 20-day period of time.
Yeah, so it's not an inexpensive program, considering we have, what, we have a teacher and para and.
And an assistant principal.
An assistant principal? It's not an inexpensive program? How is it working? Can you give us just an idea?
I'm not aware of any recidivism rates, but I was actually out there this morning and got to talk and work with some of the students. And one of the things they have done to, that they've changed since the beginning is the amount of social emotional learning they're doing. So they are there, they're doing their work. At the beginning, they were doing, I think, two days a week, but they're only there for 20 days. So really, one of the emphasis was to do something every day for those 20 days. Because if you're in the position of being sent there, there might be more to the story of what you need rather than just, just vaping. So they have done that to implement that. In terms, I don't have data about if there's any returning students? I don't.
I haven't had any, I haven't had anybody go back there yet that has exited the program. We'll still be monitoring that, let you know what those numbers are at the end of the year or next time we brief the board. The key over there right now is Mrs. Labelle is the assistant principal. And they stabilized the teaching position with Mrs. Allen. And unfortunately, during first semester, the paraprofessional passed away unexpectedly. And so they finally got that new person on board. This new team has really put their hands around this and gotten after it from the physical setup inside there. It's very much different from what it looked like back in September, October timeframe to what it is now. They've put a lot of effort into, you know, making it look nice and making it a comfortable environment for the students. And they've really thought through their processes, not only in-house, but how to communicate with schools, how to receive students, and then how to have them head back to their schools successfully. They realize that, you know, 20 days might not totally cure a student for whatever got them sent there. But they are sending them back to their families, into their home schools with a, with a skillset and a, and a better understanding of why they shouldn't be engaging those behaviors.
Okay, yeah. And it's not necessarily, when I said recidivism, it's not necessarily going back there, but it's going back to their, I should have said, going back to their previous behaviors when, when they get back to the school. And I mean, it's, it's, it's a great idea and it's a great program. But as I said, it is not inexpensive to run that program. And I guess we will have some data at the end of the year in terms of how well it actually worked, correct? Okay.
So anybody else, any other questions?
So thanks for the opportunity for us to come here and share this data with you today. And we did take some notes. So we will continue to dig deeper into ELLs or maybe students who have parents who do not speak English and the impact of some of our discipline in those areas. Also with a lens on socioeconomic, some student-specific examples and the correlation of those students to their academics, ISS. And then also the impact of drugs and that, the rising concerns in that area. And then the Prevention Center and continuing to collect some data to see what benefit there is to our students that are attending that program.
And if you will, we have one more question, please.
So Ms. Fisher, I just wanted to address what you said about principal autonomy. And I think we heard it from Ms. Laner today when she said in the beginning, she wasn't drinking the Kool-Aid, so to speak, on reducing OSS, but now she sees the light and she's drinking the Kool-Aid. I think each principal sort of gets there in their own way, in their own time, based on their community. So I hear what you're saying. I would love to be able to say, everybody do this and do it right and do it right on day one. But in any human endeavor, there's going to be some level of training and acceptance and, and all of that. And the only other thing I wanted to say on your presentation is that I think the definitions of the Cessor violations that you're getting from the DOE are essential. And the training that you will provide to the schools based on that clarification of those definitions, I think that's really the key to all of this. So I'm, I'm super excited to hear that you're doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving right along. The next, we have nothing in Business Services, Human Resources, Information System, Operation, Public Comments. Anyone for the public? CNN, we'll move on. Board member comments? Ms. Fisher, do you have any comments?
I do not right now. Thank you.
Gianna Nelli?
I, I don't either. I do have a couple of things to bring up for, from FSBA meeting Friday morning, but I'll save it for tonight because it's really for, more for the public.
Thank you.
So we did go to Tallahassee. So I had a lot of time in my car to catch up on our podcasts. And Adam Wright, as usual, does an outstanding job. I don't know how he fits all that information in his head. But Jeremy, Jeremy Rigio is a Global Perspectives teacher at North. I want to go take that class with him. It sounds so fun and so amazing what he's doing. He, he will, he will pick like a hot topic and have students argue one side one day and the other side the other day. So you, you can never really say that we're teaching only one side of an issue in our schools when you have a teacher like that putting that information out there. Also, Amy Decimore, it's not Amy Decimore's, which is how I've said it for the past three-plus years. Amy Decimore is, I continue to pinch myself that she's back at the district. And listening to her talk about her experiences here reminded me of the fact that she has her PhD in education. So she's crazy smart when it comes to finance, but she wanted to make sure that she was exercising that skill in an education arena. So she went back to school and got a PhD in education. Just, she just blows my mind. And I will tell you too, that, like my brother, for example, just, he's in law enforcement, equipment sales. And his territory just expanded to include all of New England. So I sent him a link to our podcast so that he can learn about the Lee County School District. I tell everybody about our podcast because I think they're wonderful. Chancellor Oliva made an interesting comment when we were up there last week. He talked about, you know, the focus on early childhood education and sharing with area ministers and pastors, the need for reading to children and talking to children when they're babies. Not just, don't do this, don't do that, but positive messages. And so I'm wondering if there's a way we can get area pastors and priests or whatever, religious leaders, along with other community organizations that deal with large groups of our population together in a room and ask them to start to push that message out to their membership and their congregations. That's the word I was looking for. I think that that might be an efficient way to do it. He also talked about a, like an ad campaign, billboards, are you reading to your kids? And that kind of thing. I think that gets a little bit more expensive. But you know we have difficulties with parent and community engagement in some areas of our community. But if, if people are already gathered in a spot and we can get the buy-in from the leaders of those organizations, I, I thought it was a great idea that he threw out. And the last thing is a question for us and perhaps Superintendent knows better than I do, or Attorney Beerman. When are we going to have the discussion as a board on the Juul lawsuit?
I believe we have been working with the firm, one of the firms that is representing a class to have them come for one of the workshops. I, I know we began the process of coordinating that six weeks ago or more. In the meantime, I believe another firm has surfaced that would also like to make a presentation. They're going to be competing, I suppose, to sign up school districts and other plaintiffs for these lawsuits. They're becoming, these types of lawsuits are becoming popular. We represent a number of cities that have joined in national opiates litigation and things like that. But the answer is that we've been coordinating that with staff. I'm sorry that we haven't gotten a date yet, but we're.
We've had one presentation. We did, they did have one workshop, one drooling. It just occurred.
Yeah, we did. We had a workshop and I'm not sure another presentation from a different law firm is going to provide us with any more information.
Yeah, at this point, you can make a decision as to whether you want to join the lawsuit then. I wasn't here for the presentation. I apologize.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'd like to know. When are we as a board going to have that discussion? And I did speak with Attorney Quick and ask him to determine which law firms are representing which school districts in the state and whether your firm could make a recommendation as to which would be the better law firm to go with. But I think that we should just make a decision.
I agree.
And that's really the only outstanding information that I need.
So I, we will make a recommendation based on our review of the, of the law firms and the terms of the engagements and bring it to you.
Great.
Can I just jump to add to, Ms. Patricas? That we had at FSBA Friday morning, they had a presentation about it as, again. So I actually had that in my notes to, so she did. But so, yeah. And so maybe we need to know, there's obviously several firms out there that are doing that. So, thank you.
So they'll bring it back to us then?
Yeah, thank you.
Those are my comments. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about what she just said?
What she just said?
About the lawsuit? So are, are you saying that there's not one firm or whatever that has the lawsuit? It's just kind of out there and everybody's kind of grasping to see?
So typically, when you have these large-scale industry class-action products liability lawsuits, they will eventually be consolidated into a single lawsuit where all of the plaintiffs and all of the defendant companies like Juul and whatever other defendant makers of e-cigarettes are brought in as defendants, they'll all be in the same place and one court will run the whole national or international litigation. However, the way that it winds up working for plaintiff, class-action plaintiff lawyers is that they, there's sort of a hierarchy that, among them, based on the number of, of claimants they bring into the process. And that'll all be established when the cases are all consolidated. And so they're, right now, there's kind of a land rush for, for plaintiffs. And no, they're looking for plaintiffs that have provable damages. And, and I think they've come up with a theory under which school districts have provable damages from these products. Now, whether their, whether liability is ultimately established or perhaps the industry gets together and creates a pool of funds to, to pay out claims, you know, that they can shake, these types of matters can, can play out in different ways. And, you know, it can take anywhere from, I would say, two years from the filing of the case up to 10 years to reach a result.
So are we, if we get together and have a workshop to talk about it, are we deciding which one of the ones we're going to go with? Or is there really that, are we at that point of a decision right?
You're tasking us with making a recommendation. It sounds like there is a consensus here to join as a plaintiff in a class-action lawsuit against the e-cigarette industry. And you've asked us to take a look at the various firms and groups that are out there. And we'll do that and we will bring. and we'll do that, and we will bring back our recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I can just add that, you know, one of the things that we were sort of tasked with doing when we went up there was to talk to the various districts who have joined, and those who have not joined, to determine why. I wasn't able to find any district that didn't join. And the presentation that was given at FSBA by a different law firm contained the exact same information that we received here, it was just a different firm.
Right.
So, I think that additional factual information is unnecessary at this point. I think it's just, we just need to make a decision, are we going to join or not? And really, that's the last piece of information that we need.
Sure.
Is which firm should we use.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gittens, do you have any comments?
No, not right now.
Ms. Vaughn?
I do not.
Ms. Morgan?
So, in response to something that Chris raised, I actually included in my notes from FSBA in the fall, back at Orange County School District, presented about their superintendent's sort of task force that they have with the religious community to bring them in. And I've given that information to Dr. Atkins and to Jared. And Jared, in fact, said, came back to me by email and said, he was meeting with some colleagues at some meeting, and he was going to be talking about it further. Because I agree. I think that's a community that we have not asked, and I think, given direction, we can get something from it. I sent all of you an email, but I didn't send it until like 11 or 12 o'clock today about RSM. And I don't know whether you want to talk about it now...
Do you want that as good of the order, as your comment?
Well, I'm just going to say, I don't know whether you want to do it as good of the order now, or put it off. But my comment is this, and this is not to do the discussion now, but I'm doing this because I think we need to recognize that RSM is our employee and not staff. We have two employees, the board attorney, who has been tasked with the policy, okay? And then we're supposed to have two other things that are underway. We have not, as a board, asked anybody to provide us any information on an ongoing basis about what we're doing. And so, I would like to either discuss this as good of the order now, or at some point in the very near future. Because I think we're remiss.
So, what would you all like to do?
I, in case you didn't get my drift yesterday in my comments, I totally agree. We need to move this.
Okay. And that's was my comment yesterday as well.
We offer time, let's, I mean, I see why we can't...
Okay, so, let me finish doing the board member comments, and then we can come back to the good of the order, where she can present this, and then you can have conversation on it.
Can I just add one caveat to that, though? When the meeting occurred, Mr. Quick was a part of that meeting, basically representing the board, and he is not here. I would feel more comfortable, Mr. Quick was in that meeting, attended that meeting, not Mr. Beerman. And so, I would feel more comfortable if Mr. Quick were, if we workshopped it, if we did it good of the order, can we call him and have him join by phone? But I would prefer to have him participate in this discussion, and not just to have it one-sided.
I don't think that it, and maybe I stand corrected, Ms. Morgan has come up with some, like a timeline of when we actually started, and then, this is just pertaining not the last conversation that they had, but what has happened in the past to move it forward.
Right, but it is germane to the conversation, to have both sides of the conversation that happened in that last meeting. Because we heard from the staff side of it, we did not hear what our attorney had to say from that meeting.
Okay. Ms. Morgan, you had something?
We have a contract with a firm.
Yes.
That firm represents us, regardless of who sits in the seat. And their responsibility as a firm is to us, not an individual responsibility to us. So, I just want to make that clear. My expectation is that that firm is prepared to respond to us on any topic at any point in time, regardless of who was involved at a point in time.
So, are we not going to have the firm or the lawyer available for this discussion?
Yeah, I guess you...
Okay, well, we're not in a conversation right now. So, let's finish with the board comments, and then we can go back to that. So, that ends the board comments, then, the board attorney, do you have any comments?
I don't, other than with respect to the RSM. What John Quick told me is that where they left it was, RSM was to be, was to respond further with some written recommendations in terms of how the whistleblower hotline would work. So, that is in process. It, you know, we, and I talked to John yesterday about nudging the process, nudging, pushing RSM to respond faster. But, you know, they did leave it with the ball in RSM's court, essentially, in terms of providing that next recommendation as to the operation of the hotline. Now, I had a further conversation with Mr. Williams today, who stated again that he feels that there are certain implications for the collective bargaining agreements with the, with employees that should, that suggest that they should have some role in the eventual policies. We did not get into details about that, and so, I can't really report to you exactly what he was thinking in that respect. But that, I'm just making you aware that he had raised that issue with me, as I believe he did yesterday.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent?
No comments.
Any comments? So, if I, Ms. Fisher, would you want to do this in a workshop, or, please, or do it today?
I think that we should have the conversation now. We have, we have some time, at least to determine what our next steps are. Because I'm in full agreement with Mrs. Morgan, and with Mrs. Vaughn from yesterday, that we're at a standstill, and we really don't need to be.
So, does anyone have something to bring to good of the order, right now?
Regarding this topic, or something else?
Whatever. That's our, that's, we're on our, the agenda, good of the order. Ms. Fisher, do you have anything good of the order? Actually, I'm going to start with Ms. Morgan. Anything good of the order?
An addition to this, no.
Okay.
So, is she bringing this as good of the order?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, why don't we just have her do that?
She just did.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So, and further to, remember, this isn't just about the whistleblowing.
No.
Their contract says that. Facility construction kickoff October 2019, purchasing and procurement compliance, January 2020. Where are we? Have we had a report?
No.
I guess my recommendation would be that, I would like to direct the board chair to have communication with RSM, and to basically say, we expect from RSM, as well as with the board attorney, we expect every two weeks before we meet, an update on where we are with respect to topics and timelines. We've got to get back in charge of this, and stop talking about what staff is doing or not doing. Period. Those are my comments.
May I comment?
Ms. Gittens?
RSM has been sending us updates, and I don't know if no one, anyone else has not looked at them. If you recall, the document that has where we're at in the different colored circles, we have received them. I really don't know why everybody else has not received them. They had contacted us and said that they were sending, I'm trying to look now. But we have received updates from, and in fact, there was one not long ago, that showed where we're at in the process, and it had, it had...
Well, I did have a look in the emails, and I didn't, I didn't...
I haven't seen any, but it may be that I was looking for the wrong topic.
Well, I, no, I personally have asked them to please make sure that if they send it to one of us, to please send it out to all of us, because I believe that...
And they did.
They were sending it out to certain individuals, and not to everyone.
The last one that I have, that was, I believe, sent to like about everybody, was, I have one from 1219.
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
One from 1215.
And there was another one recently, I'm trying to find it now, because it did show the hotline, and it showed the process that they were in. I was just looking at it yesterday. And it shows the hotline is at the point where staff and, oh, look from Matthew Blondell, he would...
And that was 1219.
Yeah, that's the same one.
Correct.
It's staff review and procure vendor. And I think we're actually a little bit further. I mean, the staff had their meeting, and I would agree with Mr. Beerman, that, you know, at this point, the expectations were waiting for them to come back with recommendations based on the discussion they had. My also understanding is you still have, there are two other policies that they have to come together and work on.
Are we talking about just the whistleblower, or are we talking about the other components as well?
I'm talking about the policy that's related to the whistleblower.
To the whistleblower, okay.
Everything is in their update, though. It says not started, in progress, and complete. And it was 1219, and it went to, my understanding, to everybody.
So, are they, okay, I don't have it in front of me, are they, where are they on facility construction? They started in October, are we ready for...
On 1219, they're showing that they're at document collection in progress. And that was 1219, so...
So, it's taken two months to collect documentation.
Well, they did, they're showing here kickoff, planning and development was 1118, walk-through detailed process with construction was 1211, issued initial document request list on 1212, and follow-up list on 1219.
I think we could still, when we're looking at this, it's still 1219 is when they sent this. We are now in January 28th. So, I think that what Ms. Morgan just suggested, that they give an update every couple weeks to the chair, so she can, to all of us, that way we can keep it up, because it's been over a month again since that.
There was, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there was an email that said they were going to, on a regular basis, send an update.
Can you comment?
Please, please, Ms. Vaughn.
But we need to direct them to do that. We can't, if they're not coming in here right now, and saying, "Hey, we can come to your next meeting, is that okay?" We need to direct them to do it. And frankly, I don't want to beat the dead horse from yesterday, but staff apparently has had more interactions with RSM than we have. And we do have a contract, and there are issues, but the only way we're going to be able to hammer out the issues is to have a meeting with them. I mean, not just go on a few emails, I think, and not just this person individually has talked to so-and-so, and that person individually. We need to, as a board, forward to this, with this.
So, would you think that the best thing to do, then, is to have a workshop, or have them come in and do a presentation, tell us where they're at? Come in here before us, all of us, and have that conversation.
What did you have in mind? Well, I would just like to see regular documentation about where they are.
Right.
If we feel we have the need to talk with them about something, to then schedule a workshop. You know, it's the same thing as meeting with the superintendent, or meeting with the board attorney. We meet with them on a regular basis. If there's an issue, we bring it to a workshop. I think we should be treating RSM the same way. They're not here, so let's just ask them for information, and then meet if we need to.
So, then we will go ahead and direct the chair to take, to do that? You'll do that?
Yes, and I'll get with the board attorney and move on that.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes. I mean, because last I knew, the ball was in their court, and we really aren't getting anywhere.
Right, because it's much more than just the hotline, so...
But I do have to say on record that I don't believe that it's RSM that is holding up this process.
Well, they are our employees, so we hire them.
No, and I understand that.
If they have a problem with us, then they have to tell us.
But they're being told they have to talk to staff, and everybody is telling us, including yesterday, that staff is talking with them. The superintendent said they had finished one portion, they have two more portions to finish. That's what he said yesterday.
But I believe that when they were in here before all of us, we made that perfectly clear, that they work for us, and they were not working for anyone else. I think we went over that and over that. So, for them not to, and I know when you were the chair, they were responding everything to you, and then sharing it out with us. So, now, we just need to have Ms...
Everybody is getting everything, because you had requested that.
Correct, and we should.
I'm just saying that the process that we were told, I'm not going to repeat it anymore, and that's fine, however you all want to handle it. I do know they had told us at one point, they were going to give us a regular update. So, I don't know. We haven't gotten them for January.
Did you have something to say? Okay, so, as it stands right now, then, we're going to just have Ms. Fisher go ahead and handle that, and come back to us, correct? Everybody good?
Ask for consensus.
Is there consensus? Everybody good with that?
Maybe you can even make that call today.
I can do that.
Can you be more specific than handle that?
Okay, as far as Ms. Fisher will be calling.
To request an update on the timeline they presented to us earlier.
Update, but will we be directing them to do an in-person update? Because we really haven't seen them.
Until we get the update, that's the point. Like, you meet with the superintendent, and you decide there's an issue here that needs to be discussed with the board, and then we have a workshop with the superintendent and his staff. And if we get an update from RSM that presents an issue that requires a discussion at a workshop, then we have a discussion at a workshop.
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay, now, what, okay, so, no, I get, I know what you're saying.
I'm asking, I understand about what an update is.
Right.
Thank you. Whether we have it in person, actually staff from RSM coming here, so that we can ask real-time questions, not just emailing it, but real-time questions as a board. That's what I would like to see. And if we're doing a consensus, I'd like to see the update done in person, since we haven't seen them in a long time.
Right, so, it was my understanding that Mrs. Morgan's request was that we get it in writing now, so that we see what to anticipate in the future. I will also confer with either Mr. Beerman or Mr. Quick. And then, I'll also ask the superintendent if there is information that staff has, is it in writing, and can we be presented with that? And then, again, I was understanding, as Mrs. Morgan made her request, that then, after we had that information, we could decide if we needed to schedule a workshop. Was, did I get that right? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, is that?
No, I understand what you said.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah, I understood it the first time, but I just wanted to add my preference on it.
Okay. So, as it stands right now, with what Ms. Fisher just said, are we all in agreement of that? Please, raise your hand if you are.
I did it already.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other good of the order? Anyone else? Ms. Vaughn, do you have anything for that?
No, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Nope.
Ms. Patrica, Ms. Jevanelli, Ms. Fisher?
I'm going to get to work.
So, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.